All right, welcome back everyone. Let me make sure we've got all the commissioners. We'll give them another two minutes. Hey, can we promote Commissioner Toyah, please? Wonderful. Great, looks like we're all.
Thank you Chairman for getting me in.
I moved that we reconvene this meeting with the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toyah Secondes, Commissioner Saul.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah.
Yes.
We are back. So we continue down the list and next up is calendar number twenty-one dash twenty-one Z. That's sixty-two twenty-one Westwood Bonzia and I believe Counselor is Tyler Manick. So Tyler, just let me know when you're on.
I'm on Commissioner.
Great.
I'm ready when you are.
Yep, I think we're ready. So take it away and we can get your witnesses sworn in if they desire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tyler Manick of Shane Banks Kenyon Schwartz. I'm joined by Mr. Dan Breslin who owns a property at sixty-two twenty-one West Woodbonzia and his architect Ben Kennedy. In twenty nineteen, Mr. Breslin purchased this property which is improved with a hundred-year-old two-story ten-dwelling unit residential building with a detached four-car garage. Mr. Bres, it was discovered that the city did not have any records establishing two garden level units which are all two-bedroom, one-bathroom units, just like the other units in the building. They have similar construction type and look to be established around the same time. Through this variation to reduce the parking requirement by two parking spaces, the applicant seeks to establish these two garden level units conforming with the city code. The zoning allows for these two units but with but due to the parking requirements, they can't be established without these variations. So without the variation to reduce the parking spaces by two, the applicant could only have an eight-unit building even though the zoning district allows them to have ten units. Due to Mr. Breslin's intent to preserve this existing building and due to the configuration of the lot, there is no space to add two parking spaces on this property and the applicant would further not be allowed a reasonable rate return without the request of variations. Several other multifamily buildings in close proximity to this property such as sixteen fifty-four North Merrimack, seventeen hundred North Merrimack, sixty-two zero one West Woodbonzia, sixty-two zero four West Woodbonzia, sixty-one fifty-four West Woodbonzia are similar multifamily buildings with greater parking deficits than was proposed. Further, there's abundance of street parking for any parking needs at this building. The property is operated with ten dwelling units and four parking spaces for many years without issue and there's plenty of modes of public transportation available to this property. Moreover, the requested variations which will allow these units will be a benefit to the overall community by adding critical property tax revenues as well as maintaining the natural housing stock of the area without negatively impacting the area since this application simply preserves the existing building. In addition, the request is consistent with the city's new ADU ordinance which allows for garden units to be added without a contemporaneous parking requirement. Prior to filing this application, the applicant did meet with Alderman Talia Pharo who supports this request. The applicant further met with the North Avenue District, Inc., which is the not-for-profit business and residents association in the area which also supports this property and the applicant has talked with the some of the adjacent neighbors who are excited that Mr. Breslin is revitalizing this building which had some problems from the prior owner. With that, I would ask the board to swear in Mr. Breslin and Mr. Kennedy so that we can go with the examinations.
Great, yeah. Mr. Breslin, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Daniel Breslin, sixty thirty-three North Sheridan Road, apartment fourteen A, Chicago, Illinois.
And you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Mr. Kennedy, if you're on as well, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Ben Kennedy, address is twenty-eight twenty-two West Montrose, Chicago, six oh six one eight.
Thank you. And you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great.
Since there's no objectors and our findings of fact are pretty exhaustive on many of these questions that have been raised, can I do the short form?
Yeah, please do.
Mr. Breslin, for the record, can you state your name?
Daniel Breslin.
And what is your relationship to the property?
I am the sole owner.
And Mr. Breslin, in connection with the findings of fact that we submitted for this application, did you sign an affidavit?
I did.
And the statements you made in that affidavit, are they true and correct?
Correct.
And as your testimony here today, do you adopt the statements you made in your application?
I do.
Or in your affidavit, I'm sorry?
Yes.
If no questions, I'm moving to Mr. Kennedy. Ben, can you state your full name for the record?
Benjamin Kennedy.
And are you a architect licensed with the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And did your firm prepare the plans that are subject to this application?
Yes.
And in connection with the findings of fact that we submitted in this application, did you sign an affidavit?
Yes.
And are the statements you made in your affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements you made in your affidavit?
Yes.
No further questions of the witnesses and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Could you just quickly describe what makes these units legal and approved for habitability?
Well, I can, do you mean from a building code perspective or from a zoning?
From building code.
Ben, do you mind answering those question that question?
Sure, both of the both of the garden units do meet the exiting requirements and part of our permitting is making sure they meet height requirements. So both of which, once permitted and work is complete, it will meet both of those requirements.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
No problem.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll be right along, matter twenty-two dash twenty-one dash S at twenty thirty-eight Halsted. Tyler, is this one you as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, great. So on this one. Let me quick read the department's recommendation then we'll get going. Okay, for matter twenty-two dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Paradise One LLC and the establishment maintains clear non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way so that the reception waiting area is visible from the street. Counselor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record again, my name is Tyler Manick, attorney for the applicant Paradise One LLC. I am joined by Mr. Jason Bowman, the principal of the applicant, Mr. Mike Wallen, the applicant's MAI appraiser and expert, and Mr. James Luay, the corporate representative of the franchisor. Mr. Bowman seeks to open a new location in a vacant commercial space at twenty thirty-eight North Halsted under the nationwide massage boutique franchise, The Now. The Now franchises extensive experience in operating high-end massage boutiques across the country, including in Chicago. Mr. Bowman will operate the new location according to the Now and massage industry's highest quality standards. In accord with these standards, the applicant seeks to open and operate a new high-end massage boutique in the existing ground floor commercial space at twenty thirty-eight North Halsted. This space has been vacant for over a year. Previously, it was occupied by a boutique clothing retailer. The property itself is improved with a hundred-and-twenty-year-old three-story building with approximately twenty-two hundred square feet of rentable commercial space on the first floor. The property owner has been unable to find a commercial occupant until this application. The applicant seeks to activate this existing vacant unit and the exterior of the hundred-and-twenty-year-old building will remain unchanged and any renovations are minor in interior nature. Further, the community is in demand of high-quality commercial development to occupy this ground floor commercial space. The applicant has received overwhelming support from the community for this application. We have letters of support from the aldermen, from the Lincoln Park Chamber of Commerce and the Sheffield neighbors has also supported this application. Further, the president of the condo association at this building is also supportive of this application. With that, I will call Mr. Bowman and Mr. Wallen as my witnesses. I don't think you swore them in yet, though.
No, we did not. So, Mr. Bowman, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, Jason Bowman, two-three-two-nine-zero, North Birchwood Lane, Deerfield, Illinois, six zero zero one five.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And I believe the other, is it Mr. Wallen?
I'm here.
Mr. Wallen, will you please state your name and address?
My name is Mike Wallen, five River Drive, Northbrook, Illinois.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think the finds of fact are pretty exhaustive on this application with the support of the community that we have. Can I do the short form on this?
Yeah, again, yeah, please do.
Mr. Bowman, for the record, please state your name.
Jason Bowman.
And are you the owner and manager of the applicant?
Yes, I am.
And did you sign an affidavit that was submitted with the findings of fact?
Yes.
And are the statements you made in your findings of fact true and correct?
Yes.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements you made in your affidavit?
Yes.
Unless there's any questions, I'll move to Mr. Wallen.
No.
Mr. Wallen, can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Mike Wallen.
And what is your profession?
I'm an MAI real estate appraiser, real estate consultant.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Wallen's testified here before. Is he accepted as an expert?
Yeah, we'll accept him first, thank you.
Mr. Wallen, you were engaged by the applicant to prepare a report?
I was.
And the report detailed how this application meets the standards of a special use permit in the city of Chicago, correct?
It is true. In detail, my report does include all of that.
And are the statements you made in your report true and correct?
To the best of my knowledge, they are each correct.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today the statements you made in that report?
I do.
And did you sign an affidavit that was submitted with the findings of fact?
I did.
And are the statements you made in your affidavit true and correct?
They are.
And do you adopt as your testimony here today also the statements you made in your affidavit?
I do adopt each.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for questions of the witnesses. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, okay, so I understand the pretty broad community support on this one. I think our normal questions on this type of special use still apply. So if you could give a little bit more of an overview just on COVID protocols, whether it's walk-in only, or sorry, whether it's appointment only right now or including walk-ins, if we can get in, get your hours and then I know that there's other sites of this, but industry experience of your employees.
Great, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday, nine AM to nine PM, and Sunday, ten AM to eight PM. During COVID, we operate under the assumption will be appointment only with the availability for walk-ins once allowed or deemed, you know, most appropriate. You know, COVID protocols include masks required by both guests and employees. Gloves and masks will be available for guests and employees. We will have contactless check-in and checkout. We have contactless hand sanitizers, contactless soap dispensers placed in the restrooms and break rooms. We also have air purifiers placed in each treatment room, the reception area and the break rooms as well, and an extensive list of safety protocols with regards to cleanliness with kind of before and after each appointment. And then with regards to our background, while none of us are neither my wife or I who plan to operate the massage boutique or massage therapist, I've worked as a managing director and branch office manager, financial services firm in Chicago and have extensive experience overseeing, you know, a large number of employees in that office. My wife has had, you know, a decades-longer experience in hospitality within the Chicago area before getting her masters in forensic psychology and committed to, you know, helping the youth of the city of Chicago. We also plan to hire experienced general manager with with knowledge in the wellness, you know, spa and kind of massage, you know, areas as well as a lead massage therapist who kind of can share their expertise specifically in the art of massage and the necessary requirements and expertise required to uphold the highest standards there. And in addition, I would note that we have, as you mentioned, a really strong, you know, franchise network with an extensive team with great experience and resources there to help us in our process as well.
And all the massage therapists will be licensed and trained in accordance with the state of Illinois requirements, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Great, any questions from the board? Sounds like none. Thank you for another pretty exhaustive application, Tyler, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, so twenty-four dash twenty-one, definitely was continued. So we're moving now to twenty-five dash twenty-one dash Z. Let's just count for more. And we do have opposition on this. So once we get, come from where it's everyone settled, I'm going to quick read a little summary on how we're going to take the opposition.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here and hopefully Mr. Carabar and Mr. Luke is here and our architect, Chris Dase.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, I think I see them, Counselor. So let's make sure that Ms. Barowski has been promoted as well.
I'm here.
Great, okay, perfect. So before we get started, I'm just going to quick read something on this matter since there's opposition. We've got everyone promoted. And I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall, it's a hearing. So we, as the board, are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here's how this hearing is going to proceed. First, the applicant will put on their case and all of their witnesses. Then we'll turn to the objector and the objector can put on their case as well as ask any questions of the applicant's witnesses. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objector. Then we'll return to the applicant for rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. Finally, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, the board members will be asking questions of both the applicant and the objectors as and when they please. I don't believe we have any aldermanic office people present, so Tom, I think we can get started under those guidelines.
Yes, thank you. Just for your information, there was a letter of support from the alderman's office and Bennett, the chief of staff, has talked to Mr. Barowski a number of times. Anyway, would you please swear the witnesses?
Yes, we'll start with Mr. Carabar. Are you, are you able to?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, great. Mr. Carabar, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Alan Carabar, fifty-three thirty-three North Lakewood in Chicago.
Great, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, Chairman.
Mr. Dase.
Yes, sir.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Christopher Dasey. My address is fifty-nine thirty Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, and finally, Mr. Bakalar. Let's see. Do you see Mr. Bakalar? Maybe he's on mute.
Chairman, he was under attendees, he's coming in now.
Oh, great, okay.
I think we lost him.
Oh, I see him, I see him on now. Mr. Bakalar, if you take yourself off mute, let's see if we can.
Sorry about that, I'm still adjusting. Sorry about that.
No worries. So will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Luke Bakalar. My address is one-nine-three-eight West Crystal Street in Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, Counselor, go right ahead.
Thank you. Alan, will you please tell the board a little bit about yourself?
Sure, my name is Alan again. I'm a partner with Back Home Development, which is kind of a family company here with Luke and Luke's father. And we specialize in new construction here in Chicago.
And you've appeared in front of this board many times, including on a request very similar to this one that we're here today, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And on this one, we're asking for a single variance to allow a fix-in in that, you know, to allow a bridge across an existing as or an as-of-right stairs, access stairs at the back of three flats. And I say a fix-in because the truth is it's only a couple of inches, a few inches and you don't really need a bridge at all. You don't need any structure at all, is that right?
That's correct.
But because of the history of garage roof decks and the way the the variances have evolved and then been changed for single families but not for multiple families, you still need this variance even though there's really no structure, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you didn't get this variance and you built a separate staircase along the wall, that would eat into the open space which now complies. And so you'd need a variance for that instead of this variance, is that right?
Yes, and let me, let me focus on that. So the access to the garage roof deck is designed this way for three main reasons. One, it's the most efficient manner. We already have a secondary required stair that will be built there as of rights. Second is what you just noted is if we built a access stair in the rear yard, we wouldn't need the rear yard requirement, so we would then be asking to relocate the rear yard open space to the top of the garage deck. And then third, this, as designed, it allows for a usable rear yard. We dedicate this yard to the first floor unit, which in this case would be likely a family. Our experience at similar buildings is that, you know, this is open space that, you know, the family or the owner wants. They use it when it's actual a good amount of space and they're going to maintain it, which is good for all of our owners as well as our neighbors.
Okay, and so if you had to, well, our architect will address under the new building code, he doesn't believe that you can even build a second stair and meet the new building code setbacks, is that right?
That is correct. He's a lot smarter than I am, so I'll let him speak to that.
Okay. Right now, there is an exhibit on the screen, though, where he uses it as a demonstrative exhibit to show that the two would, the two stairs because of new building code regulations that went into effect a few minutes, a few months ago, that that the two stairs would have to enter, have to take up some of the same space, is that right?
That is correct. It would essentially conflict and it's not possible.
Okay, so you didn't create any of these circumstances and in your opinion, it won't change the essential character of the neighborhood, is that right?
Correct.
And one of the other exhibits which was just on the screen a moment ago is there, you did a Google study of other roof decks on this block and the block across the street. So this alley and the alley across the street and there are some seventeen or eighteen existing roof decks in the area, is that right?
Correct, there are, there are ten, ten other garage rooftop decks on the eight-hundred block of West Buckingham as well as, which are included in the full seventeen, which are basically essentially within one block of us between Halsted and Clark here.
As a matter of fact, most new buildings, new construction, particularly multifamily like three flats, do try to have the garage roof decks, is that right?
That is the trend and has become the expectation in the marketplace, essentially that this would be an included amenity to that duplex down units.
Okay, and Luke will talk about the rate of return and the market in that respect. But is your request for this variance purely to make more money?
No, sir.
What is the purpose of it?
The purpose of it is to gain access to the legally allowed garage rooftop space in a, you know, efficient and reasonable manner.
Okay, and also, does it create a better life circumstance for the family that will live there?
For whomever is going to live there, yes, that's correct.
And in your opinion, is this would be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to any other properties?
No, sir.
And the fact that you're allowed to step from the as-of-right staircase to the, to the as-of-right roof deck, will that in any way impair anybody else's light or error or have any substantial negative effect on any other property?
No, absolutely not. And as you noted, essentially, it would be built exactly the same with the exception of the small connection between the two as-of-right structures.
So if the Board were to deny this, the staircase would still be there exactly as it is. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And the code allows for garage roof decks. The only issue is how you get there. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have of Mr. Carabar on direct. Could we talk to Mr. Dase? So Chris, you're a licensed architect and have testified in front of this Board many times. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And you've designed this in such a way to apply, to comply with all codes and ordinances, except you have this difficulty where the code requires a variance in order to go from the one as-of-right structure to the other as-of-right structure. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
And we don't, we don't really need to build a separate structure that is a bridge. The distance is so minimal that a person will be able to step from one to the other. Is that right?
Correct.
But the zoning establishment still requires that we get a variance.
That is correct.
And unlike a single family, it's your opinion that you would not be able to put a separate second staircase. Besides the fact that it would be wasteful and duplicative, you believe that the new code creates an issue that way. Is that right?
Yes, I do.
So we have, as our hearing exhibits, you have done a copy and you have highlighted this section of the code. Will you tell us about that?
Basically, the code says that under multifamily units, that the exit stairs that are exterior need to be three foot from a property line, an inside property line.
So that means that the stairs have to be three feet off of the property line between your building and Ms. Borowski's building. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then also, does that same rule, in your opinion, apply if we were to do a second set of stairs from, does it apply to the other property line as well?
It does, because it's multifamily.
So we have a 25-foot lot, so that would take six feet out of the possibilities. Is that right?
Correct.
And how much, how wide is the stair, the as-of-right excess stair itself?
The width going, it would be a three-foot wide stair.
No, the double stair that goes.
Oh, the as-of-right stair, that's about a foot.
Okay. And so six and eight is 14. We would only have 11 feet left to meet the rise and run of a separate second staircase. Is that right?
That's correct.
And we have an exhibit, which was up a little while ago, that shows the two would conflict. In other words, you couldn't have both of them because they would take up some of the same space, about four or five feet of same space. Is that right?
That's correct.
So in your opinion, you can't comply with the new building code and build a second staircase with your as-of-right staircase there. Is that right?
Correct.
And if you did build a second staircase in town some way to do it, you would, then we would need a different variance. We would need a, because if there's a stair above it, it can't count towards the open space. Is that right?
That's correct.
So not only would the staircase be duplicative and unnecessary, but it also would cause us to need a different variance than the one we are seeking.
That is correct.
Okay. And in your opinion, does this in any way change the essential character of the neighborhood?
No, it does not.
And as a matter of fact, you created the exhibit that shows there's 17 or 18 roof decks on the block. Is that right? Or within one block. Is that right?
Yes.
And in your, you created an affidavit with my help that addressed all of the criteria necessary for the Board to grant a variance. And in there, you went through several of the 17-1-0501 promotes public safety, 17-1-0502 preserves overall quality of life for the residents and visitors, 503, 509, 512. You listed all of the ways that the zoning code mandates or the purpose and intent of this zoning code is met by this plan. Is that right?
Yes, I did.
And in your opinion, this is the only reasonable way to solve the problem of going from the as-of-right stairs to the as-of-right roof deck. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's all I have of Mr. Dase. Mr. Bakalar, are you here?
I am.
Yeah. And you, as a part of our obligation here, you did a, first of all, you tell the Board a little bit about your background and why you're particularly interested in marketing, marketability and rate of return and those things.
Sure. In addition to being a partner with Back Home Development, I also hold my real estate license with that properties. I've held my license with that properties for going on about 11 years now. So that's my, I guess, expertise.
Okay. And you did a little study that we've submitted to the Board that shows what this, if you're unable to have the garage roof deck because you're, were unable to get to it or the people who will use it are unable to get to it. You did a study of what the return, incidentally, these are condos. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
These are condos. You intend to sell them?
Correct. Yep. Yes.
And is it your opinion that condos with a garage roof deck are more marketable than condos without one?
Yeah, yes. And we reached that conclusion by doing a market analysis. We looked at the past two years, diversity to Addison, Ashland to Halsted duplex down units that were newer resales and less than 10 years old. And of the 29 units that sold in that geography over that period of time, 22 of them had garage decks or garage roof rights. And of the 14 that were on the market or that were under contract in that period of time in that geography, 10 of them had garage roof decks or garage roof rights. So we would be in the serious minority.
And so after you did that study, did you do a study of what you thought, reasonably thought, based on your experience, the rate of return would be with and without the granting of this variance?
We did. We, it was complicated. So what we decided to do was do kind of a case study of unit-by-unit comparisons, those with garage decks and those without garage decks. And we controlled for factors that otherwise might contribute to price fluctuations in those units. So we looked for units within close proximity of one another, similar closing date, unit age, unit square footage, and bedroom bath count. And once we controlled for all those things, we found three very similar compares, unit-to-unit comparisons. And those averaged out to a $93,000 reduction for duplex down units without a garage roof deck.
And all of that that you've just described is in a multi-page study with exhibits that you, we've submitted to the Board. Is that right?
So many pages. Yes, that's correct.
So that's, I think that's all my witnesses in my casing fees.
Thanks. And Tom, so just to, just to put it fairly simply, the thing you cannot do in these plans without the variation is the connector.
Yes, but there's not really, there's no real, it's the right to connect because there's really no actual structure.
To answer the Chairman's question, yes.
The zoning department will not allow, without a variance. You know, I suppose it's consistent on their part because if it was, you know, a foot or two feet or three feet, they require the same variance, even if it's a couple inches.
Yeah, no, I get that. I get that. It's like for the way we think about connectors, it's a connector and that's, that's no problem. I'm just trying to clarify it. So, okay, any questions from the Board right now, especially anything, keep in mind, anything we want to, you know, facts we want to try to get out prior to the objector speaking?
Yes, this is Jolene Saul. I'm just, I understand that the connector is, you know, isn't a material change to what would be there. But since this is new construction, how are you, how is it that you're not creating this condition yourself?
Well, most respectfully, Commissioner, I would answer that, you know, if you're doing something according to as-of-right, there is not a need to do something else. This, both the stairs and the right to a roof deck are as-of-right. There's no need, the code doesn't require that, you know, the same code that creates variances creates the as-of-rights. And it's meant to allow you, as the Board, to use your common sense and use, to follow the criteria and, you know, allow people to, even the playing field, and allow people to, you know, build efficient, commonsensical, code-compliant buildings.
I mean, you wouldn't be here if you were as-of-right, right? So, correct. I get short of the connector as-of-right, but you are here because the connector, whether it's an inch or three feet, is not. So again, can you tell me, beyond the zoning code, what the hardship is and how you're not creating this condition?
Well, I don't mean to argue with you, but if it's as-of-right, don't you have a right to, if you have a garage roof deck that's as-of-right, don't you have a right to get there? And you have to get there somewhere.
Or as-of-right.
Pardon me?
You would not be in front of us if what you want to do is as-of-right. So I'm asking about the piece that is not as-of-right.
I, to be honest with you, I think it's an accident of history and of the code. You know, I think we've been through this before, but I've been involved from the start. 15 years ago, when the garage roof deck started happening, there were no, there was no way to do them and people just did them. Then the city started going up and down alleys, writing up people on them. And Alderman Hopkins created a solution for single families, but he didn't create a solution for this. It's the code. It's the problem.
I didn't hear your question.
Pardon me?
I'm just, because you're telling me it's the code, which doesn't, which is the zoning code, which doesn't really answer my question. So I'm just curious if the developer would like to attempt to answer it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. So maybe I'll say it in a slightly different way. I don't believe we created the hardship. We've got two as-of, we've got as-of-right stairs and as-of-right garage deck. We need to get to this legal garage deck. You know, we could do a stair in the backyard, which is not possible. We can't do winders because now they've changed the code again. So we have to be three feet off each side. You could, the other option is you can do one parallel to the garage, right? But then you lose a parking spot and now I only have two spots for a three-unit building. So we're stuck in the middle, essentially.
Shorter building and had more space?
If we developed a, I see what you're saying.
I'm not saying you have to. I'm just asking you to.
May I interrupt on this?
Please.
If we did a shorter building under the zoning code, the rear yard open space needs to be in the rear yard setback. So if the building's shorter, the rear yard open space has to remain there. It cannot move forward. The right, it's very clear the way it's written. It's the rear yard open space must be in the rear yard setback. So even if we did a shorter building and attempted to move the rear yards, open space forward, we would not be in compliance.
Because you couldn't have a garage deck?
No. If we put, if we moved the rear, the rear of the building, let's say we made the building four foot shorter and moved the rear yard open space four foot towards the front of the building, our rear yard open space would not be compliant because it would not be in the, completely within the rear yard setback. It would be within what's considered part of the building line.
Okay. Would you still have a viable, financially viable property if the building were short enough to meet all of the zoning?
No, because if I made the building shorter, I would then have to still get a, for that rear yard, the stair that would be running parallel, because it would be eating a part of the rear yard open space. We'd still need to get a variance for it.
Because. I mean, you could make the building even shorter. So I'm just, but that, okay.
I could make the building shorter, yes, but it still would not comply with the zoning ordinance as far as the rear yard open space. We would still be here before the Board because rear yard open space that we'd be providing would not be in its entirety inside the rear yard setback. Therefore, I would need to have a variance for that.
But my last thing, you could size the building so that the open, the rear yard open space met the requirements, right? There is a building that exists, right?
The building as built right now would be, but we still would not have access to the garage roof deck. I couldn't shorten the building and still comply with the rear yard open space and still access the garage roof deck. It doesn't exist.
Right. But maybe, okay, that implies.
Let me, let me answer maybe slightly.
The garage roof decks are hard. Okay. Yep.
Just if, I'm trying to interpret what Chris is saying in a different way is that if you shorten the building, which as you know, is clearly possible, right? You can shorten the building, that extra additional space you add doesn't technically count towards the rear yard open space because it's not in the technical rear yard. So while the open space is larger in a practical sense, in a zoning sense, it doesn't affect the rear yard open space. And maybe I confused it more.
No. So I did not mean for this to be a difficult question. So is there no size rear yard that would meet the city's requirement? Or could you just shorten, is there, is there a length of building that would not require the rear yard requirement to be satisfied by the garage roof deck?
Well, Commissioner, we're not doing that. We meet the rear yard open space here now. But the problem is if we put a stairs in it, then we wouldn't. And so we'd need a variance. But this way, it does meet it as-is. There's enough room between the building and the garage to meet the rear yard open space. And all we need is a variance to step across the couple of inches there without a structure. And that's why I say it really is a code problem. It's a history problem. It's not.
Outside of our purview, this will be my last thing. It just sounds like you're arguing so you can do what you want to do, but you're not necessarily given the right to do what you want to do. So that's why I was trying to suss out a hardship, but I'm done here. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just trying to clarify this too, because these questions, these questions are helpful. So if you were to reduce the building, if you were to shorten the building, that increases the amount of rear yard. So why would that extra yardage not count as rear yard open space?
Your assumption is incorrect. The rear yard is a percentage of the lot, not of, not of the building. Uh, your, your assumption is incorrect. The rear yard is a percentage of, of the lot, not of, not of the building. Uh, and so as Mr. Darcy and Mr. Terbar explained, if you shorten the building, you could have a, as a, as a practical measure, you could have a larger yard, but it wouldn't meet your rear yard open space requirement.
Let, let me add one caveat to that. It wouldn't meet your rear yard open space requirement if you added a stair in the rear yard, which is I believe what, what the hangup might be. If we have a pie, uh, and we put a stair in it, we're in front of your board requesting relief for that stair. If we increase the size of the pie, that, the, the initial pie stays the same. You can't count the, the additional four feet that the pie grew towards the initial pie. I probably just confused myself in explaining that, but, uh, is that helpful at all?
Yeah, I think it's helpful. I, I mean, I'll, here, I think it's all helpful to get as much information out here on this. Um. We're gonna have questions as we go, just because it's a, you know, it's a different argument, of course, than we typically see for what comes down to it is a connector. Um, and we're just trying to piece it together. So let's see. You know, we've got objection on this, so I would say, um, are there any questions from, from the board now? Um, before we go to objection and of course, we're gonna, we're gonna have time. We can formulate more questions to, um, to ask generally at the end. Okay, sounds like none. So I am gonna move to the objection and we'll probably cir- circle back on a lot of these questions. Uh, I'm just interested to hear, um, what the objection is and what this brings out. So, um, Ms. Ms. Borowski, are you present?
I am.
Great. Um, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Violet Borowski, eight two three West Buckingham Place, Unit Two. And I represent the condo association for eight twenty-three West Buckingham Place as the president and co-treasurer.
Great. And, um, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, um, go right ahead with your objection.
So the way that the, um, variance is described as being a thirteen foot rear setback. And so I don't understand, you know, how it can be characterized as merely a bridge that's a few inches. We're talking about thirteen feet closer to, as far as, from what I understand, to our alley than is allowed in our neighborhood. So my, my objection is to the use of those thirteen feet in its entirety. Um, at this time, I can tell you that, um, in my alley, and I know eight twenty-three on the other side of the street does have some rear roof decks. There has been on my side of the street, several new constructions, several of which have garages in the back alley, none of which have, um, uh, rooftop decks. And I would have to imagine part of the reason for that is the difficulty in connecting it to the building based on this variance. I can also state that the, all of the buildings that were built around the time of my building, which was in two thousand and four, all look very uniform. The second required set of stairs that's necessary for egress is inside the building and everyone has a suspended balcony. There is no staircase going down to the floor. So that leads me to believe that the entire construction of the staircase, at least the part that comes into thirteen feet of the rear setback from the alley, is not consistent with the, the code in, in our neighborhood. And the reason that this concerns me is that if we were to have a building that was built like the other buildings in our alley that had balconies that are suspended, that would not impact our light and air. But I feel as though the new construction will, especially for units one and two, make us feel closed in, in the back, especially when enjoying our space on our balconies will make us feel as though our privacy is being intruded upon by having a structure that is, you know, in, in the, you know, the, the outdoor roof deck that will be looking into our units. Um, and it'll change the entire feeling that we receive where, when we are enjoying our space on our balconies right now, that will feel very different than it would if balconies were built on the new construction to match everything else in, on the block, at least on our side of the street.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. I think I understand what your, um, your argument is getting at is that although, um, although there, there are many separate garages on your alley, there are very few who have roof decks. And you are concerned that a roof deck adjacent to your property would touch our standard of affecting, um, light and air, potentially safety in the sense that more so than blocking lights, there's like, there's a view into your spaces?
I think it's in addition, and I'm not disagreeing that you can build a roof deck. I, it's my understanding that you can build a roof deck on the garage. My concern is that the way that it's going to be constructed and the way that it's going to look is going to be even more intrusive by having the staircase connecting to the roof deck. I think that it's going to, and I, and I really do think that part of the reason why it's difficult to connect is because of the feeling and the lack of privacy that, that individuals that are currently living here would feel from there being a roof deck. Like I said, there are several new constructions on our block with garages, none of which have built roof decks. So I do think that's a concern. My, I, I would say that, you know, another concern is that this is being characterized as just a couple inches, I think someone said, of a bridge, but this is asking for a thirteen foot change to the rear setback. So that, that construction is going to be in that area that we otherwise would get light and air is going to be a drastic change from what we have right now.
Okay, yep, I've, I've got it. Um, before we go to counselor, any, any other questions from the board for Ms. Borowski? Okay, Counselor Moore, do you, any questions for Ms. Borowski or, um, we'd like to hear, um, if, if no questions or if after questions, a rebuttal from you?
Yes, uh, I'd ask, um, first of all, uh, Luke, Mr. Backlar, can you tell us about, um, uh, when Ms. Borowski's building was built and what has changed since two thousand and four?
Yeah, so, uh, Ms. Borowski's building, as well as the building, uh, to the west of eight twenty-five, were built fifteen, twenty years ago in the early two thousands, when developers took a very different approach. They tried to jam as many units as possible in the one building and in so doing, they sacrificed uh, garage parking, outdoor space and the convenience of fewer stairs. Ultimately, they sold less expensive units. The current approach, which is the one, you know, we subscribe to is very different. It's uh, now that the neighborhood's much more established and family friendly, thanks in part to Nettleher School, uh, outdoor space and indoor garage parking are now buyer requirements. Um, additionally, larger, more family friendly units with fewer stairs at a higher price points are what's selling frankly. Uh, so what, what we've designed, uh, we believe is consistent with current market demands, uh, which just so happens to be different, uh, than Ms. Borowski's building. Is that, is that good, Tom?
Yeah. And then, uh, Alan, will you, uh, talk about, um, the, uh, fact that, uh, Ms. Borowski's building has four, four units and yours only has three and you considered you could, you could have built a bigger, more unit, uh, but why didn't you?
Well, uh, like Luke said, uh, if you wanna do four units, basically you have no rear yard. You have a concrete pad like our adjacent neighbor does, and you've got two car parking underneath and two surface parking spots in the back. Uh, this is not the preference in this market. Uh, and, uh, like as Luke said, basically people are moving towards larger units. Uh, you know, so people could live there, you know, through several iterations of their life, in fact, uh, with garage parking.
Okay. And, um, you, you had several times, you had conversations with Ms. Borowski. I did and Bennett in the Alderman's office did. And, um, yeah, and, and in her testimony today, uh, she still seems to believe that uh, the stairs that she thinks is going to take her light and air away is it stairs that you would build even if, uh, there was no garage and no, no garage roof deck. Is that right?
Yes, I wanna, I wanna drive that point home. I, you know, I just took some notes during her testimony and said, you know, uh, that, you know, the stair, you know, a lot of the notes were about the stair. She does not agree, disagree with the building of the rooftop deck. It's the stair that, you know, she believes is gonna take her privacy. Um, I, I, I get it. The, the denial letter is confusing, right? It's confusing to us half the time and it was confusing. I, I spoke to her, uh, several times and, you know, reiterated that the stairs are as of right and regardless of if we receive this variance for relief or not, the stair is still going to be there. Um, you know, we, we, we always try to accommodate our neighbors, honestly, whether we're doing a variance or not. Um, you know, new construction is, is not pleasant. It's unexpected. Um, you know, we did a couple of things here as an example. So our balconies are actually inset into our building. Uh, and we actually filled in both sides. Uh, they're not open on the side so that we're not looking into our neighbors and our neighbors are not looking into ours. Uh, these stairs are really transient in nature. People are going up and down them for a minute or two. Uh, they're gonna be open. We even looked into flipping the building, uh, right? You could put the stair on the other side, right? Is it, is, is a, and that's a fair question. And there were two, you know, concerns with that. One is consistently our, our, our building entries are on the left side between our neighbors and we want to be consistent in that nature to give people privacy. And the other was that we had power lines, uh, going across our property on the other side. So if we flip the stairs, uh, we would be too close to those, uh, power lines, uh, that go to our neighbor. Um, there you go, Tom.
And then, and, um, Ms. Borowski's building is two feet off her lot line and the stairs that, um, uh, she believes will include into her privacy are three feet off our lot line. So there's, uh, five feet, um, um, additional beside, away from the buildings. Is that right?
Correct. We are three feet from the property line. Uh, and, and sorry, Tom, I will add one thing. Uh, you know, through our conversations, it became clear that, you know, privacy was a concern. And, uh, you know, we did, we did offer an accommodation of, uh, you know, we said we're happy to install, you know, or pay for the installation of, you know, lattice on that side of their balcony if they felt that the stair was intrusive. Uh, we've seen that in other buildings, uh, where they just do some kind of privacy fence and you can, you know, you can grow a garden on it and whatnot. Uh, so again, we did try to address that concern.
You know, so if you did, as she suggested, put a balcony there, uh, then you might have people sitting there actually, uh, from the exact same spot looking, uh, into her balcony or, or, uh, would have the same problem, if that right?
That's right. We, again, we inset our balconies for privacy for everyone. Uh, and additionally, I don't believe you can, uh, build balconies like hers anymore because uh, that now intrudes is considered an intrusion on the rear yard open space. Uh, so that design is no longer actually possible.
Um, I, I think that the rebuttal we would do, uh, was still available for more questions if there are any.
Can I make a few comments?
Of course. Is this, um, is this Ms. Borowski?
It is, yes.
Yep, go right ahead.
So I think there's a lot of discussion simply about privacy and I definitely think that that is one of our concerns. But I can tell you, and I've definitely been, you know, I, I'm very aware of, you know, the properties that are out there and how things look, um, generally and concerns that buyers have with respect to what's going on in the rear yard. And I can tell you that this will feel like we are closed in this. The way that this construction looks with this massive staircase and having the connection to the rooftop deck will make us feel like we have backyard neighbors, will make us feel closed in on one side. I feel, unit one is gonna really feel underground, in my opinion, once this is all built up. Um, our unit one is also, uh, I guess you could call it duplex down, right? Like it's two, two levels. And, um, our whole building receives the majority of its light from the south side, especially the southwest side, given this massive tree in the building next door to us. Um, and so this is going to greatly impact any light we receive at all to, to our building units. Um, so I am, you know, very, very concerned about the way we will feel enclosed, the way we will be having even less light than we currently do. And I think a lot of the discussion that I'm hearing as to why um, the development needs to move forward as is, is for adding more value for the new property. But I don't think enough consideration is being given to the value that will decrease for each of our units based on the new property, um, and based on the lack of sunlight that we will be receiving from the back and sort of this intrusion that we'll now be feeling from the back. And I think that's especially true for unit one. Um, and so I do think that that needs to be considered. I do think that the existing properties here should be given some consideration as to what we bought into and what we expect as a return when we're finally able to sell our places. And so, um, I'd just like that to be a consideration of this board as well. Thank you.
Ms. Borowski, if, if I could ask you, um, a question, because I think what, um, the applicant is saying is that your objection is really more to do about the stairs, which they can build as of right, um, as opposed to the connector itself that would connect to the garage. So what is your, what's your response to that, uh, argument?
I have not received any clarification during this call and I'm not an architect, so, but I don't, don't think that it's as easy as saying that it's the bridge. I don't understand why it is a thirteen foot rear setback variance and yet I'm being told it's a couple inches of a connector and that's the only thing that I can object to. The stairs will be connected to the building, which ultimately, it's my understanding, means that the building ends at a different, at a thirteen, thirteen feet closer to the alley. So if someone has some more information with respect to why that's permissible, and I can tell you it's, there's no one else in, in my back alley that has that level of construction within thirteen, within that, those thirteen feet. So to me, you know, the, the way this is being characterized doesn't seem altogether accurate.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, who's speaking?
Uh, sorry, uh, Luke Backlar, uh, with Back Home Development. So I, I think as, uh, as Alan had alluded to, um, you know, there, there was some confusion regarding the way that the denial letter was written. And, uh, you know, I, it's probably Alan better saying this than me, but my understanding is Alan tried to explain to Mr. Ms. Borowski, uh, that the stairs are as of right, the building is as of right, and the garage is as of right. It's the connection that we're seeking relief for. Um, and I, it's, it appears to be, uh, the hangup, uh, the wording of the denial letter as opposed to what we're actually here talking about today.
You know, I think, yeah, go right ahead. Alan, actually, it would be, um, it would be good to hear from you on that as well, since you were referenced.
Thank you. Um, that, that, again, that's what exactly what our conversations have been going round and round and I, I wish there was a desk at the city where you could ask these questions and, uh, you know, we talk to neighbors all the time about these denial letters and they're saying, well, what are you building? And they are confusing. Um, in, in, in reference to kind of character, I just wanna speak about character for a moment. So, uh, again, I'm looking at the map here. Uh, eight fifty-five and eight forty-one Buckingham have a similar uh, condition with a garage rooftop deck. And then the adjoining alley, uh, that we share, I see eight fifty, eight fifty-eight, eight forty-six, uh, again, have a similar condition. Different buildings are, you know, Different buildings are, you know, are are built at at different, you know, at different times. But, you know, the the character of these multifamily streets are, you know, are are a mix of buildings, right? You've got some buildings with balconies, like Ms. Barowski. You've got some buildings with with balconies and stairs, and you've got some buildings with just stairs. This, this is kind of part of Chicago multifamily living and the character of the neighborhoods. And you see your neighbors when you go up and down the stairs and when you're out on your balconies hanging out. And I I think it's unfair to say this is not in the character of the neighborhood. There are other buildings on the street that have different, you know, different types of, you know, they're much shallower than hers, like her neighbors. And they have balconies and they have stairs as well, and I'm sure their light is blocked by other people. But it's just, we're not essentially changing the character. This is the character.
But no one is taking the time to explain, in my opinion, what is, why does, why is the ordinance confusing in air quotes? Like this, it's a 13-foot rear setback difference. What does that mean? And why is it only a bridge?
Well, okay, so if I can just, I know that there will be ample back and forth on this, but I want to put Steve Valenziano on, who has a lot of insight on a lot of these questions and is with the Department of Planning and Development. So Steve, if, are you on? I want to get you sworn in.
Yes, I'm on.
Great. Let me state your name and address for the record.
I'm Steve Valenziano. I'm with the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
So there's a lot to unfold, unpack here, but the the ordinance was created to, was rewritten by Alderman Hopkins and Alderman Smith to kind of prevent this from happening, the stairs in the backyard that then fill up the, most of the gap between the garage or the accessory building and the principal building, the house. The idea was that i- if you wanted to do this by right, then you would have a stair that would run parallel to a wall, a front wall or side wall of the garage, be attached to that wall and be no wider than four feet. This garage is a a single-family home. So there's a requirement of one parking space for this, for this property. So this is a three-car garage. If there, so I mean, there would be a way to change the access to the roof deck with a stair that meets the ordinance. However, there is nothing in the ordinance that does, that prevents the rear access stair from being positioned the way that this is. That, you know, has been a change kind of in the, in the industry, I guess, that they they're creating these stairs that no longer run parallel to the back of the wall of the of the principal building and instead project out from them. That's something that we have not fixed yet or taken care of yet, but it's something that we are looking at. Because it it is, the 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 desire of the city has been to protect this gap between the accessory building and the principal building. However.
If I could just point out real quick, only because you touched on the parking spot, this is a three-dwelling, three, three-unit building, not a single.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought it was a single family. I wasn't here for the beginning of this. So then they do require three parking spaces, and they're going to have, have to have the the lot line, the lot line. Therefore, the rear, the stair to access the roof deck, if you're going to still have a roof deck, would have to be in the rear yard. And then it would eat into the rear yard open space requirement as as well. So, I mean, it it is. Yeah, it's a tough situation with having the roof deck for the three-unit building.
Well, so can I ask Steve a question?
Absolutely.
So Steve, you weren't here for the beginning, so you didn't understand it was a three-unit. And one of the things we pointed out was we have an as-of-right stair and a right to have a roof deck, but there's no way to get there because if we put a a second stair, we'd be taking away from the open space, which currently is compliant. Isn't that a a problem with these three flats?
It it could be. I mean, this is Zoned RM5, so, I mean, the building itself could, I, I, you know, I don't, I'm not familiar with how tall it is, but the building itself could be redesigned, so it's not as deep in the lot, I would think. So, I mean, there, there may be alternatives, but yes, it would be, it'd be tough to make it all fit to have the ten, there's a 10-foot minimum dimension for the rear yard open space. You're at 13. Your garage is at 22 feet deep. So, I mean, there may be something in there, but it'd be tight. Either way, it'd be tight.
And the point is, we, if we didn't get this variance, we need another, a different variance to put the stairs in the open space.
Which doesn't affect the neighbors as much.
We we would have this stairs, and we would have a second stairs because we didn't get the variance to get to there. And that would require a separate variance because it would, you don't allow open space to have a stair in it. Isn't that right?
That's correct. The open space has to be open to the sky.
Chairman, may I ask a question? We also have to remember that the issue is that if we did a second stair, it would conflict with the required egress stair because it would be overlapping.
Okay, just make sure I identify yourself when you're speaking.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
So Steve, you, again, you missed the fun of this, but the architect has told us, and we have an exhibit that shows the new building code, which requires the access stairs to be three feet off the lot line. And he thought, he did a drawing that shows if you put a second stair and you put, and the stairs, both sets of stairs were three feet off the lot line, the two would conflict. They would, you'd get enough run and rise for the parallel stair that would run into the excess there.
Well, to answer that, I mean, I I would have to defer defer to the building department. However, we worked very closely with the building department and in coming up with the standards for the access to the roof. And we worked with them again when, with the new code, and there, it was not seen as an issue. There is also relief at the Building Board of Appeals. So, I mean, there's ways to redesign to make something work. I will agree, though, that in either way, any way you would, you would do it, it would be, it would be tight in this rear yard for this size of a building. So, yes, there are requirements of the building code, there is the Building Board of Appeals, there are alternative code regulations that could be, can be applied. And I'm not familiar with if the stair is combustible or non-combustible, how far it has to be from the property line. That'd be something I'd have to go to the 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 building department for. But but I believe that there could be an accommodation.
Chairman, this is Alan. May I ask a question to Mr. Valenciano, please?
Yes, yes, you may, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Valenciano. So this, this is the expert I've always wanted, and thank you very much for taking part in our call. Two questions, you know, just to clarify. So a garage rooftop deck space is legal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the stairs in the rear yard, although there are many iterations of how we can do it, those are also legal?
Yes.
Okay, so, and this is just the the points that Ms. Barowski, she said, you know, how do I know? We now have the expert here telling us that these are both legal as-of-right elements of our project. So I just wanted to clarify that.
But, okay, but to clarify further, the the city council passed an ordinance that's that said if you want to get to your rooftop deck, then, and without having to go to the zoning board, that you, it would be designed differently. There is a variation that is allowed in the zoning ordinance that allows you to relocate your required open space to the rooftop deck. So again, there's a, you know, there's push and pull on these things because we understand that you, you know, you're going to build to the maximum square footage of your building, you may lose that minimum dimension in the rear setback and then would have to relocate the open space to the roof deck. So, I mean, yes, but you're at the board asking for the connection to the roof deck from the stair, which is not allowed by right.
Thank you. And to clarify to the chairman and Ms. Barowski, if we did do a redesign and we did put a secondary stair and met all those requirements, we still would have this secondary stair on our building. So the stair that the objector does not prefer will be there. Thank you.
Can I, really quick, Mr. Valenciano, if you could clarify? I thought that when you started, you said that the ordinance was originally created to prevent this from happening, sort of to prevent this open space from being blocked for the neighbors. And so the stairs should be closer to the building and other things should happen. That was, that was my understanding. I think that there's still some confusion when Alan and the others state that this is as of, that the stairs are as of right, exactly the way that they intend to build them.
Well, the the zoning ordinance allows for a for stairs in the rear setback if they're providing the, a second means of egress to the principal building. And so, you know, there's always unintended consequences. So when we allow one thing or take one thing away, the design industry kind of reacts, and they change what they're doing. And typically, those rear stairs used to run parallel to the rear of the building instead of perpendicular to it. And, you know, so here we are, and that's why we don't allow the connection. That's supposed to discourage you from doing this. However, you seek this variation, and now you can, you, you know, you can get, gain access to the rooftop deck of your garage with this perpendicular stair if you get this variation. So, I mean, the idea was to to prevent it, but it, with this variation, it wouldn't. And you would, you could still have a stair in the rear setback that would be permitted to get that second means of egress to the upper units.
So I, and I just want to reiterate from what you said, the intention is to prevent this from happening because of the effect that it may have on the health, safety, and general welfare of the neighbors. So I'm I'm still in complete objection.
This is Commissioner Esposito, but if the stairs were turned, you would still have an eight-foot use of your rear, rear yard by this staircase. So it wouldn't be 13 feet, it would be eight feet. Is that correct? And then you'd need another staircase.
Correct.
Thank you.
But we'd also need a a variance because if you only had eight feet of open space, you wouldn't meet the requirement.
Okay, we've got a lot of information out there, and I want to circle back to general questions, too. So Ms. Barowski, first, I want to give you an opportunity to close. And then we can go back because I have some questions as they relate to hardship. So, Ms. Barowski, you can, you can take that time if you please.
I'd just like to reiterate that eight twenty-three West Buckingham condo association and all the current owners, which are four units, object to this variance because we do affect, we do believe it will affect our light, air, and privacy and decrease our property value, as I stated in my statement. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much for coming today and talking with us. So we got rebuttal. One thing that comes to mind, and we've gotten a lot of information out that's been helpful, I want to kind of level set a bit to our standards and hear a little bit about hardship. Say that we, the hypothetical occurs where we do not grant the variance. There is no way to connect between the roof deck and the residence. I understand that may make the roof deck. It could make the roof deck nonusable. What does that do, for example, to your economics?
I I can take that one if that's okay. Luke Backlar, again. So as I swore to in the affidavit, in my reasonable return analysis, it would take our project profit percentage down from 6.4% to 3.4%, which would make it a, you know, commercially unviable project.
Okay, and and just to confirm, so it would do so even though just one unit gets the roof deck access and each unit already has a balcony?
Correct, yeah. If, in the analysis, the conclusion I reached was that these garage decks carry a market value of roughly $90,000. So while it's only used by one unit, it carries significant value. You know, think, not to talk about COVID, because it's all we talk about all day long, but, you know, outdoor space at home has never seen a greater premium. That, that $90,000 was evaluated when we applied to to sit before you today. So, I mean, for all I know, it's grown. It certainly hasn't decreased. The the premium for outdoor space in today's world has never been greater, particularly in duplex downs, which are historically family-friendly units. So we're talking about a family-friendly unit in a great school district. I think the probability that a family with kids is high, and where are the kids going to play? That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Me? This is, I'm sorry, this is Alan. May I just close? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you guys want to close, yeah, counsel more unless you had anything else. I think you go ahead and close.
If Alan, if Alan would like to do it, I'd like Alan to do it.
Any, really quick, any other questions from the board before we go to a closing? Okay, go right ahead, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it it's worth noting, we didn't talk about it. What about the neighbor on the other side, right? So the other side is eight twenty-seven West Buckingham. They have the same type of building as the objector, Ms. Barowski. And we spoke to them, and they, they understood what we were pursuing. And they were, you know, had no issues with it. We're happy that we were taking down this building and building another building next to theirs. So there's two sides to every story, and they were fully supportive of this. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, the objector is talking about, you know, light, air, and privacy. And it seems that, again, all these things are triggered by these stairs. And I I appreciate the background from the city on these stairs. And but it was confirmed by Mr. Valenciano that they they are as of right. And we're seeking just the connection between the stairs and the deck. And it's hard to argue that that few inches of a connection is actually taking any air, light, or privacy. So on that note, thank you.
Yep, thank you. We're going to take this under consideration. Thanks, everyone, for your time and thought. And thank you, Steve, for coming on. That was very helpful.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to be moving on to matters twenty-six dash twenty-one dash S. Okay, one second. So we're moving on to twenty-six dash twenty-one dash S, twenty-seven dash twenty-one dash Z. Yeah, and that's it. So I believe that there's a department recommendation that I'm going to read. Great. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, eight-dwelling unit residential building, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated as of October 1st, 2020, with site plan dated as of January 13th, 2021, prepared by Craft Architecture LLC.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have the exact same team, except we also have Joe Ryan now.
Okay, great. So everyone is, everyone is sworn in.
Okay, except Joe Ryan.
Oh, he was sworn in earlier. He's sworn in. He's an all-dayer. He's basically one of us, so.
So, Alan, you want to tell the board briefly about the situation that you came to in trying to develop a building at 2215 North Halsted?
Sure, I'm going to give a little background first, Tom. So we set out to design here a building with spacious three- and four-bedroom condos that would be a true single-family home alternative here in the city. The proposed building would have an A-grade entry, elevator to each floor, elevator, yes, to each floor, underground parking, large outdoor spacious, spaces, and gracious living quarters. Our experience and research have shown that there's demand for this type of unit in this neighborhood, specifically young, young, growing families, as well as empty nesters who are looking for this type of home. The unique circumstance that we had here was that we've got, we've got this B zoning, but we abut to RM 4.5 zoning. So we had to adhere to some reduced setbacks because of that adjoining lot.
And actually, so everything, you're kind of the transitional point. Everything to your south is commercial, and everything to your north is residential. Is that right?
That's correct.
And even though you're asking for variances, you actually have a full, for instance, required to have a setback because of you're next to an R zoning, but you still have, for the length of your building, you have five feet off the lot line to the north. Is that right? Which is the direction of the residences. Is that right?
Correct. We've actually exceeded the requirement of five feet. We're five feet eight.
And some are, and the only reason you need a variance there is because in order to have the parking in the back, that intrudes into the side yard. Is that, is that why we need that side yard variance?
Correct.
And actually, in a B zone, the residential units have to be 30 feet off the back, and we're, the building is, part of it is 25 feet off, and part of it is 33. So on part of it, we meet more than meet the requirement, and in the other part of it, we're a few feet, yeah, off of the requirement. Is that right?
Correct. It's 20, it's 25 foot 11, as revised, and the other part, we're 33 foot nine for the, for the northern portion next to the residential property. So we exceed.
On average, we're basically very close to meet the 30-foot requirement, even though we do need a variance for that. Is that right?
Correct.
And you said, as revised, we've had, you've had extensive discussions with the neighbors across the alley, and you moved the actual garage building off the alley further, and you moved the actual building further to the west as well. Is that right?
Yes, let me talk a little bit about that process. So at the alderman's request, we went through an extensive community process, ultimately leading to the receipt of support from our adjacent neighbors, the homeowners in the adjoining alley behind us on Burling, as well as Lincoln Park Central, the neighborhood group, and Alderman Smith. At the request of these parties along the way, we made a number of modifications. We shortened the building by two feet. As you noted, we reduced the rear yard set, I'm sorry, the rear setbacks of both the principal building and the garage off the alley to widen. This is a, this is about a 14-foot alley, so it's pretty narrow. So we're all the way at three foot seven apron, just to allow more space for the neighbors. And then there was a request, which we're going to fulfill, of putting some green space with bushes on the back of our garage facing the neighbors opposite us.
And, and so by going through this process and making all these changes, at this point, as far as we know, we have no objectors, no one who, who doesn't like the finished product. Is that right?
That is correct. As I said, we have, I should say, we have letters of support from both adjacent neighbors, as well as the alderman, who outlined the process, the neighborhood group's support, as well as Burling neighbor's support.
And the neighborhood was particularly happy that you had more than one-to-one parking, which is part of why you needed the, one of the variances. Is that right?
That's right. The, you know, the neighborhood groups, you know, in general here, but specifically this one has a strong preference for more off-street parking. There is some metered parking there on Halsted, so it's not really that usable for long term. And neighbors had concerns about, you know, parking on other side streets. So their preference was for more, more parking than not.
Okay. And why wouldn't you just build commercial on the ground floor with six apartments above instead of doing an eight-unit all-residential building?
Thank you. So there's, there's low viability for commercial space at this location specifically for two reasons. One is our position in the, in the corridor. Our block is actually primarily residential. As noted, we're the last commercial building on the side of the street before it goes all residential. We're also across from residential. So for these reasons, we get minimal secondary commercial foot traffic. The second one is Halsted overall is a challenging commercial corridor. The main stretch is a 2100 block, which is south of us, and they've only got commercial on one side and residential on the other, which makes it kind of a bit of a split personality. We provided an exhibit to the board of our, of our survey we took on November 19th. I don't know if they have it there. And we found 17 vacant storefronts between 2,000 and 2,400 North Halsted, which shows a difficulty in this corridor. And, you know, this corridor is about 50/50 mix of residential, commercial over all those four blocks. Ours is obviously a lot more residential. So that 17, you know, is a, shows a high percentage.
And I don't know if, if Jeanette has the, we submitted several hearing exhibits. One of them is a rendering. One is the pictures of the 17 empty storefronts in the immediate area. But you also, I lost my train. I thought that. I'm sorry. So, oh, I know. The seller, you're, you're buying this on contract, contingent on zoning. And so if you're unable to, the seller, Mr. Glasscock, has written a letter, we made an exhibit, wherein he explains that the existing commercial space has been unable to be rented because it's an 8,000-square-foot space. And that fits into the, the whole reason you didn't, you decided you could not do commercial here. Is that right?
That's right. It's one of, one of the factors. And, you know, to give you an idea, he's, you know, he has tenants there essentially not paying rent, and he's keeping them in there to have a occupied storefront as we speak, which speaks to kind of the viability of this last commercial building in, you know, primarily residential block.
And you and I worked out an affidavit that if we went line by line through it, you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant both the variances requested and the special use requested. If you continue to testify, you testified consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
I'd ask next, Luke, Mr. Balacar, would you, could you tell us about your study, your reasonable return study in this case?
Sure. I'm sure you all are a little tired of hearing us talk, so I'll try and make it short. All total, I'll just go to the high level. All totaled, without the requested relief, we estimate a total diminishment of value of $1,836,000. This is partially offset by the reductions we'd see in hard construction costs, soft construction costs, and transactional costs, which collectively come to the tune of like $525,000. Once the dust settles on the pluses and minuses, if we're granted the requested relief, we estimate a project yield of approximately 8.7%. And if we're not granted the relief, we estimate the project will yield a negative 7.8% return on investment or loss, which, you know, obviously is not something we would pursue.
Okay. And similarly, you went through each of the criteria necessary, and if you were to continue to testify, in addition to your reasonable return study, which was attached to your affidavit, you would continue to testify consistently with both of those documents. Is that right?
That's correct. Yep.
And, Mr. Dossi, are you still here?
Yes, sir.
And you designed this building so as to comply with all of the codes and ordinances of the city's cargo. Is that right?
Yes.
And in your opinion, the result is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, particularly to the north and to the east and west. Is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you would testify consistently with all of the criteria you addressed in your affidavit and statement. Is that right?
That is correct.
Mr. Ryan, would you tell us what you did to prepare to have an appointment in this case?
Joseph Ryan, MAI President LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago. At your request, I went out and looked at the property, looked at the surrounding neighborhood. I have to admit, I was somewhat shocked, having been appraised property in that area for 40 years, that there were that many vacancies along that stretch of North Halsted Street. Street-level retail with no parking has the least viability of any of the retail uses at this point. And to, to put retail in at this location, even if you divided up the storefronts, would result in extended marketing periods. I don't think the condos would sell if they were condos, and they would be hard to rent with no parking.
And why don't you think the condos would sell above a commercial space?
No, I mean, the, the, if they condoed the retail spaces. If they were forced to put them in.
Okay. And.
There's just no demand for retail at this location.
Okay. And this, now on the screen is the rendering that Mr. Dossi has created to show the context and how it will look.
Now that there's demand for.
Yeah, okay. And how about in this neighborhood, a three- or four-bedroom apartment, a condo that would fit a family and allow an extra room for homework? Is there a demand for that?
Oh, absolutely. That, that's, the, the, the demand has changed over the last year. Smaller one-bedroom condos and apartments are vacant now because people are either looking for two bedrooms or for the bigger one-bedroom with a, what used to be a dining room is now used as an office.
And you and I worked out, or no, you did a, your own study and report, and if you were continuing to testify, testify consistently with it. Is that right?
That's correct.
And in that report, you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant a special use, and you found that it would not, this development would not have a negative effect on the surrounding property values. Is that right?
None whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in two. All of these gentlemen are available to answer further questions.
Yeah, thank you. Lot of information there that goes into our analysis. So two questions. As I read your application, that I understand is probably dumbing it down a bit from the analysis that we just went through. But, so especially for the variation of 27 and 28, there's a lot of talk about what, what's going to be done on the roof. You know, pergolas, you know, a wood fence. Which of these cannot be done without the variation? Is, is the reason that the pergolas are mentioned at the top of the application because they count towards height?
Alan, you want to answer it?
I can answer that, but I think it best come from the architect.
Chris Dass, the architect. The variation in the height was to allow increase the ceiling heights from eight foot six to nine foot within the units. And that is driven by marketability. The pergolas can be built, the pergolas can be built as of right. And so can the private stair access can all be built as right.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is which of these characteristics that are noted are actually tied to the variation. So that's helpful. Any questions from the board?
Joel, we thought just, you could succinctly state the hardship.
Alan, you want to do that?
Yeah, this is Alan. So we've got several requests here. So the special use hardship is that, you know, as I, I won't go through the whole, essentially, the commercial is unviable here.
All right, not to interrupt you, but I meant for the variations.
Sure, thank you. I'm sorry. For the rear setback, essentially, we're that last commercial building, so we're required to carry on characteristics of the R-zoned lot next to us, which is a unique circumstance. So that's why we're seeking the rear yard setback for that, for that reason. If it wasn't for that, we could actually scoot our, our building forward, but we're required to have a 50% of the adjacent R-lot front setback. And in speaking with the neighbors and the neighborhood group, they liked kind of the cascading from the commercial building next to us to us halfway, and then the residential building. So we're about six feet back, and the next building is about 11 feet back. And that was their preference to kind of have a slow cascading as opposed to a long brick wall. And we even left, on the side of our building to the north, we left that open so that it wasn't a long brick wall, which you saw in that six-foot difference.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll take it under consideration. Thank you mu, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Yep.
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations.
Okay. All right, let's move to 29-21-Z, 712 to 720 West Grace Avenue.
So hopefully, we have Dave Gasman.
No, I got a minute here.
Oh, Joe, I think you might be, if you could just mute yourself. Okay, do we have David Gasman?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you. All right. Tom, go right ahead. I know this is.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you please swear, David, and our other two witnesses are already here?
Great. Yeah, David, so will you please state your name and address?
David Gasman, 3210 North Halsted, Chicago.
And David, do you swear firm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And so, David, you're the longtime owner of a 34-unit, classic courtway building at this location. Is that right?
That's right.
And it's, it's lot line to lot line as it is. And it's, it's lot line to lot line as it's been, I don't know, is it an 80 or 100-year-old building?
At least, probably more than 100.
And there's, there's no place to add parking spaces, is that right?
That's correct.
But there is, in the basement, which is really just a couple of steps down, there's a lot of open space in this building and buildings like this where you could add apartments. Is that right?
Yes.
And right now, there's tremendous demand for apartments that are near the L. And if this were a, not in our building, but a E-building, you would be able to take advantage of TOD, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And in TOD, you could waive the parking spaces. But since in our, policy-wise, you're before the board trying to seek that same relief in essence, in order to add four apartments in this unused area, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And these apartments will otherwise comply with the, all the codes, and you have more than enough FAR and MLA to add four units. And right now, that space is just wasted, and this will, this will allow additional residents in this area that the city wants to populate near an L-stop, is that right?
Yes.
And while, because it's not a TOD, and it's not, you're not upzoning, while it doesn't actually fit into the affordable, technical sense, affordable, you're, you actually sent me a list of the affordable chart that the city puts out, and we, I got it after our deadline to make it as an exhibit. But if you go through it, your garden units that you will put there will actually be that or the same, that or less than what the city would require if it was a technically affordable unit that was added to a, an upzone, is that right?
Yes, this would fall under the 60% AMI.
And the 60% AMI is what the standard, what the city generally requires in a, in a TOD upzone, is that right?
Yes.
So what we're here today is, since there's no place to add parking, you're asking to waive the four parking spaces so that you can add the four affordable, with a small "a", units in the unused space in your, to be garden units in your basement, is that right?
That's correct.
And you know, you rent, you rent the other 34 units there. Generally, do your tenants have cars, do they need cars?
As far as I know, no one needs, I have parking in a nearby building, and no one has asked me to park there. So I, I don't see that they need any additional parking.
And you and I went through each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variations to waive the four additional parking spaces. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
I forgot one thing. You also did an analysis of reasonable return. In other words, if, if you do not get these variances, what will happen with the idea of adding four units?
Well, obviously, I have zero return because I couldn't add the units without the variance.
So you'll get no return?
Correct, because I couldn't add the units.
And so in terms of reasonable return, the only way you can get any return is if the variances are granted.
Right, yes.
As a matter of fact, if it's not granted, the code requires you to add a parking space when you add a, a unit, so if they're not granted, granted, you can't add the units. Basically, you'll have to scrap the project.
Yes, unfortunately, it's an all or none, I can't, I can't do anything about the variance.
Okay. And then, Mr. Dossi, are you here? Chris Dossi, are you still here?
Yes, sir.
And you designed this in such a way to comply with all of the codes and ordinances of the city, is that right?
That's correct.
And these four units will go in the garden area, the basement, which is just a few feet down from the, from the grade level, is that right?
That's correct.
And the, the building has more, more unused FAR and more MLA than we're using because it's RM6, is that right?
Yes.
And, but you chose to put four units because they fit well, and it would, they would be viable units in currently unused space, is that right?
That's correct.
And then, in your opinion, this won't seem the essential character of the neighborhood because it fits right in, there'll just be four additional units in this existing courtway building, is that right?
Correct.
And you and I went through each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant these variances, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
Yes, I would.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's the essence of our case, both of these gentlemen are available for further discussion.
I've got a couple of questions, right off the bat, before, if the board has any. So I know that the, the four garden units that are being added will technically meet requirements for what would be a level of affordable housing, 60% AMI, what does that look like in flat cost, like what does that cost per month?
So the, I'm going off the 2019 form, I haven't gotten the 2020 yet, but for that, that is $891 for a studio and $946 for a one-bedroom.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and also, I know you have nearby parking, I was just wondering, how, how nearby is it?
50 feet within the same alley.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Would you mind telling us, how many of the existing legal 34 rental units are rented at this time?
I may have one vacancy, I would have to check on that.
Okay, so just to maybe express the hardship involved here. I mean, currently, you are obviously not receiving this variance would not render the entire building useless. So can you articulate the hardship?
Um, well, the hardship, I would not be able to build any more units if I don't get the variance.
Okay, and how would that impact your return or your income?
Not building units, I guess, would not impact it at all.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thanks.
That's all from me, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, Counselor. Okay. We are moving to, all right, yeah, we already, we started with 30-21-Z, so we're now moving to 31-21-S, 5210 West Belmont Avenue. So Counselor Ostian, whenever you're present, just let us know.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, okay, great, so really quick, and we'll get the witnesses in a second to get in, I'm going to read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, may I proceed?
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have two witnesses today. Brian Concepcion for the applicant, and our expert witness is Kareem Masour.
Great, let's, let's get your witnesses on, sworn in. So I can, I can just run it through.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, is this Mr. Concepcion?
Yes, it is.
Can you please state your name and address?
Name, Brian Concepcion, 5210, West Belmont Avenue, Chicago.
Okay, thank you, do you swear firm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do. Miss Concepcion, she's here as well.
Okay, great, Miss Concepcion, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jennifer Concepcion, 5210 West Belmont Avenue, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, and real quick, we're just getting a lot of, a lot of feedback, so it might be a struggle.
Was everybody listening?
Mr. Concepcion, your microphone volume is too high.
Let's see, Mr. Concepcion, can you hear us? Yeah, so we can't hear you, it sounds like you're outside. I, if you try to speak now.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, it's, it's better now, yeah, thank you. Just, just be sensitive to that, we were getting a lot of feedback, so if we can keep it quieter, that'll be great, if not, no worries, this is a reality of the pandemic, and we'll get through it, so. Counselor, you can go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start with my first witness, Mr. Concepcion. Mr. Concepcion, can you state your name and business address for the record?
Brian Concepcion, 5210 West Belmont Avenue, Chicago.
Thank you, sir, and you are familiar with the application for special use filed by the applicant, is that right?
Yes.
In fact, you are one of the owners of the applicant corporation, along with your wife, sitting next to you, Jennifer Concepcion, right?
Yes.
The proposed use is a themed barber shop with experienced barbers established in the immediate area, is that right?
Yes.
Now, regarding your floor plan, you anticipated that there will be four stations in the proposed site, is that right?
Yes.
And you have, in fact, established COVID-19 protocols, is that right?
Yes.
And those COVID-19 protocols include that clients will be by appointment only, that you will be using hand sanitizer, that people will be checked with respect to their temperature, there will not be any guests, and staff and clients will both be wearing masks, is that all true?
Yes.
I apologize, this is the court reporter, I missed the last thing you said, Counsel, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Counselor, Counselor, if you could, if you could, if you could speak up, and then also, if, if everyone could just try to make their backgrounds as quiet as possible while they're not speaking.
Does this sound better, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you, yeah.
My last question for the court reporter and for the board was to Mr. Concepcion regarding the COVID-19 protocols. They include that clients will be by appointment only, that hand sanitizer will be used, that everyone's temperature will be checked, that there will be no guests allowed, that clients will be by appointment only, and staff and clients will wear masks. Is all of that true, Mr. Concepcion?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions I have for the applicant. I could move on to my expert witness, Mr. Kareem Masour, that's all right?
Yeah, you can, you can do that, and we'll circle back with questions, because I'm going to have a few.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do I need to be sworn in for this hearing?
No, 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 so Mr. Musawir is sworn in.
Mr. Musawir, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Kareem Musawir, 221 North Pussell Street in Chicago.
And you're a professional land planner, correct?
Correct.
And you've worked for the Department of Zoning for many years, is that correct?
I did, yes.
And you're familiar with the subject property located at 5210 West Belmont Street, also known as 5210 Belmont Avenue, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Have you been to and inspected the subject property?
Yes, I did.
Have you inspected other properties in the subject area?
Yes, sir.
In your inspection, sir, of the surrounding area, are there other barber shops or beauty salons, and does there appear to be a need for this type of use?
There are, but there are beauty salons across the street. The difference between the other uses and this use is that it's a theme use, the Concepcion's own the property that they're in, they're going to operate the business, they live in the property, and so this is a different establishment of a use.
And Mr. Musawir, in your opinion, will the proposed barber shop meet all of the general criteria for a special use as set forth in the zoning ordinance?
Yes, Malcolm, it does.
And that it complies with all of the applicable standards?
Yes, sir.
That it provides a public convenience and will not have an adverse impact on the welfare of the neighborhood?
That's correct.
It's compatible with the character of the area in terms of site, building, and design?
Yes, it is.
It's compatible with the character of the area in terms of its operation regarding hours of operation, traffic, and so forth?
Yes, sir.
And finally, the project will promote the pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
And sir, have you prepared a report of your findings?
I did.
Mr. Musawir's report is attached in our findings of fact documents. Should you continue to testify, would your testimony be the same or substantially the same as that contained in our findings of fact?
Yes, it, it would be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions and no additional witnesses.
Yeah, so, Mr. and Mrs. Concepcion, can you go a little bit more in depth on your experience in the industry?
Yes, my experience in the industry, I would say about nine years. I've been around barbers and barber shop owners, I took a liking to it. I did go to school for it, didn't finish the school I was going to, they stopped having the program. But I'm more in the owner and managing side of it.
Okay, so will you hire, do, do you already know who you'll be hiring to be cutting the hair, or how?
Yes, 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 I do, I have a few barbers waiting on me and professionals licensed.
Okay. And I actually think you, you already said it, and the issue's a little bit diluted by that, I'm aware you, you live in the building and not some third-party resident, but what will the hours be?
Yeah, the hours of, gotta write them down here. So Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. Friday to Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to Friday to Saturday, eight AM to eleven-thirty. Sunday, eight to six. For the time being with COVID, I'll be probably around eight o'clock shutting down.
Okay. Very great. Any questions from the board? Sounds like none. We will take this under consideration. So thank you very much, everyone. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving right along. Calendar number thirty-two-dash-twenty-one-dash-Z at twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman Avenue. And we will either have Mark Kupiak or Agnes Plaka as Counselor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, yep, I hear you.
Members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington. I represent the applicant, Erasmo Salazar. And I have on the call today my associate, Agnes Plakam. I have the applicant, Erasmo Salazar. Also have his daughter, Carrie Salazar. And Carrie is here both as a witness and an interpreter. And I have the project architect, Joe, strike that, George Arivosis. And the case involves that building, twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman. Very simply, the building seems to have been built more than a hundred years ago as a single-family home. When Erasmo bought the building in two thousand and three, the building was improved with a second-floor addition and a two-story rear addition. And those were done prior to his purchase of the building. Years later, years later, he got a notice of violation from the city to the effect that there was no permit record for those two additions. Back in two thousand and fifteen, he attempted to correct this violation and actually filed an application before the board for a variation similar relief for what we're asking for today. Same applicant, same premises, same relief, and the board granted that application. Calendar number two-four-six-fifteen-Z. We had submitted a copy of that. Anyway, he plans on remodeling too, not able to go forward at that time. Now he's ready, but the resolution's more than a year old, so we're back again today for the same relief.
Okay, so in all, and then we'll get your witnesses sworn in, but it's a form of existing nonconformity?
Yes, yes. He just wants to keep those two additions that have been there, we think, more than twenty years.
Okay, great. Can we get your witnesses on?
Sure. Carrie Salazar, Carrie?
Yes. Yes.
Carrie, would you state your name and your address?
My name is Carrie Salazar. My address is twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six-zero-six-twenty-three.
And Carrie, what's your relationship? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So Carrie, I'm going to swear you in as if you are translator, interpreter. Is that accurate for why you're here to do that?
Yes.
She's here to interpret, but she also has personal knowledge and she could actually testify the portion of this.
Okay, great. We'll do both. So Carrie, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
And do you swear or affirm to accurately translate from, is it Spanish?
Yes.
From Spanish to English and then English to Spanish?
I do.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Carrie, would you tell the board what's your relationship to the applicant, Erasmo Salazar?
He is my father.
Good. Carrie, are you familiar with his building at twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman?
Yes.
Is it true he bought that building in about two thousand and three?
Yes.
And Carrie, when he bought that building, did that building have already a second-floor addition and a two-story rear addition?
Correct.
And that was obviously done before he bought the building?
Correct.
And you're familiar with his effort now to get a building permit for those additions?
Yes.
Because he obviously wants to keep those additions, correct?
Correct.
Good. Now, Carrie, I've got a couple of questions for you to direct it to your father that you're going to interpret. So ask your father, please.
Let's swear in, Erasmo.
Okay.
Carrie, so if you can translate this portion, but Erasmo, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Erasmo Salazar. My direction is twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman.
Okay, great. And Carrie, can you just translate the address for the court reporter or for the?
Yes, twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman Avenue.
Great. And Mr. Erasmo, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, great. And just going forward, just so we get it right structurally, Carrie, if you could just, when I ask a question of Mr. Erasmo, or sorry, Mr. Salazar, if you could just directly translate what I'm saying to him and then directly translate back, just because he's technically the applicant, so we want to make sure he's speaking.
Okay.
Great.
Carrie, please ask your father, is he the owner of the property at twenty-three-twenty-four South Holman?
Eres el dueño de la propiedad sujeta?
Sí.
Yes.
And is it true that the second-floor addition and the rear addition were on the building at the time he bought it?
Yes.
Es cierto que cuando compró un edificio. Yes, correct.
Okay. True, your father tried to fix this problem back in two thousand and fifteen?
Es cierto que lo tratas de arreglar anteriormente en dos mil quince.
Sí.
Correct.
Also true, he's back here today to do the same thing he asked for then, to get zoning permission, to get a building permit?
Es cierto que estás hoy para arreglar los permisos que no pudiste arreglar en dos mil quince.
Sí.
Yes.
Carrie, is it true that we prepared an affidavit and your father signed an affidavit for this case today?
Es cierto que firmaste un papel para el caso de hoy?
Sí.
Yes.
And if I would continue to ask him the questions contained in that affidavit, is it true that his answers would be the same as what he said in the affidavit?
Tus preguntas, tus respuestas van a corresponder con lo que has dicho anteriormente.
Sí.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd rest on the affidavit for Erasmo.
Yep, that sounds good.
Next witness would be George Arivosis. George, are you there?
Let's see if we get George.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. I think I'm here.
Yeah, good, George. George, for the board, would you state your name and your address?
Yes, this is George Arivosis at eight-fourteen North Cross Street, Wheaton, Illinois, six-oh-one-eight-seven.
Thanks, George. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
George, are you the project architect?
Yes, I am.
George, is it true this building at twenty-three-twenty-four Holman at the present time has a second-floor addition and a two-story rear addition?
Yes.
And does that rear addition enclose the rear steps for the building?
Yes, it does.
Good. And George, with respect to the second-floor addition, in your opinion, would you estimate that addition may be at least twenty years old?
Yes, it is, my opinion.
Right, in your opinion, roughly. And George, also true that that second-floor addition follows the setback of the exterior walls of the building right below it?
Yes, it does.
And George, also true that the existing building, obviously, does not have setbacks that conform with the current setback requirements?
That is correct. I do not.
And that's the reason why we need this variation?
Yes, it is.
And George, with respect to that rear addition, what would you guess the age of that rear addition?
It all appears to be over twenty years old. It's older construction.
Good. And also true that the setback, that the rear addition follows and conforms with the setbacks of the exterior walls of the building right in front of it?
Yes.
And again, the building, as we said, does not meet the current setback requirements?
Correct.
George, did you sign an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to quiz you, George, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they will.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd rest on the affidavit unless you had some questions.
Yeah, any questions from the board? So I guess, just as a clarification, I know that it is nonexisting conformity. Which of the renovations would be outside of the current structure of the building that's in nonconformity?
George, can you respond to that?
I'm, is, I don't know. I'm sorry, there's stuff outside of the nonconforming that we're discussing?
Well, that's part of my question. Is there?
No, 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 sir. I'm not aware of that, no.
Good. I just wanted to get that on the record, so.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, yeah.
Yep. Okay, great. So any other questions from the board? Take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Salazar.
Thank you.
Okay, thirty-three-twenty-one-S has been continued, so we are going to move to thirty-four-dash-twenty-one-dash-Z, thirty-five-dash-twenty-one-dash-Z, and thirty-six-dash-twenty-one-dash-Z, all at thirty-four-oh-one West Berry Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Sanford Stein. I'm attorney in this matter. I'm appearing by phone. I can see you and I can see the screen. I've had a little bit of a technical problem, which I finally figured out to my friends who are suffering with me on this for my clients, but it was too late to do that. Can you hear me, Mr. Jim?
Yeah, we can hear you, so.
Thank you. And I can see you. So the good news is, the bad news is you have to hear me. The good news is you don't have to see me. Mr. Chairman, again, Sanford Stein at the law firm of LNG Law Group at one-seventy-five West Jackson Boulevard. I'm very pleased to be representing the Chicago Transit Authority today on its variation requests for the development of an electrical substation pursuant to zoning ordinance, a minor services utility, which is permitted in the RS-three district. We are here seeking variations because the lot in question is a small remnant lot. It is irregular in shape. And it is currently owned by the CTA. They have owned it for many years and they store underground some technical switching equipment and other kinds of materials. When it became necessary, and it is necessary, to boost power to the blue line, it was convenient to use this particular site, as you can see in the drawing above you, which is that triangular piece in the fenced area because it is adjacent to the blue line. The blue line runs right under there, under the street there. And it's important, as you'll hear from my witnesses, to have power boosts along the line to provide service. More people want to board more trains, more electrical power is necessary. We need to boost that power along the way. We have taken this small lot and we have, with a great deal of effort, you'll hear from our architects, been able to design a very handsome structure on this lot, minimizing impacts to the adjacent property and kind of maxing out whatever impacts we have on those adjacent streets. The variations are necessitated by the size of the lot and the size of the very specialized equipment that will be housed inside the structure. And that needs to be spaced appropriately. We've gone through tremendous efforts to avoid impacts wherever possible. Particularly to the adjacent property at thirty-sixty-nine North Gresham. I have had, Elo has appeared in the hearing. I may hear from her later. We have had delightful conversations with her throughout the period of time, including this week, including today. And we are doing everything we can to show that we will not harm her structure. Mr. Chairman, I will have three witnesses. Finally, we have been in touch with the community. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has submitted a letter of support, which we'd like to show you. We'll have three witnesses today. My first witness will be Mr. Jim Harper, who is the head of infrastructure engineering for the Chicago Transit Authority. My next witness will be Krista Gliva of the noted architectural firm Ross Barney Architects, who designed this building. And my final witness will be Mr. Stephen Leonard, who's a noted land use planner and expert, who's appeared before this board many times. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I would like to proceed if you'd be kind, unless you have questions with me at this moment?
No, I just have a few points to make, Counselor. So we have an objector present on this case and I see that she has been promoted. So is it pronounced Al Hello?
Yes, could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. So the process we're going to be doing, since there is an objector, is Counselor Stein, he's already started, will put on his case. We'll have the opportunity as a board to ask him initial questions. Then we'll go to you as objector. You can put on your argument. We'll have questions for you. Counselor is allowed to have questions for you and it'll be a bit of an open discussion. Then the applicant gets to do a rebuttal before we ask final questions and close. The only other note I'll make is there is someone here from the alderman's office that will speak as well. And I think the order that makes sense to me is to, I'm going to have Counselor Stein put on their case, then go to the alderman's representative, and then take objection. So with that, Counselor, feel free to move forward. We can get your witnesses on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry if I jumped the gun on your instructions a little bit. Would it be appropriate to ask you to swear the witnesses at this time?
Yep, yep. If you could introduce them, please.
My first witness, thank you. Do you want to swear them all at once or as they appear?
Let's do them all at once. I like it that way.
Okay, so let's be certain that Mr. Harper, Ms. Gliva, and Mr. Leonard are all here. And would you please make yourself available to be sworn?
Jim Harper's here.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. So let's just take them in order. Mr. Harper, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jim Harper. I'm chief engineer for the Chicago Transit Authority.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, thank you. I believe next is Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
And will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Stephen Leonard, L-E-N-E-T, and I reside at fifty-four-oh-one North Clinton, Chicago, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And what's the final witness's name, Counselor?
Ms. Gliva of the architect, Ross Barney Architects. Krista, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, yeah, there you are. So will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Krista Simon-Gliva with the Ross Barney Architects. I live in Evanston, Illinois.
And will you give your full address, please, just for the record?
Seven-thirteen Wolford Street, apartment one A, Evanston, Illinois, six-oh-two-oh-two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harper, once again, for the record, please state your name and occupation.
My name is Jim Harper. I'm chief engineer for the Chicago Transit Authority.
And what is your business address, please?
Chicago Transit Authority is five-six-seven West Lake Street.
Thank you. Sorry, you just know where to go to work. Now, in your capacity as chief engineer for infrastructure for the Chicago Transit Authority, do your duties include managing CTA's engineering department? And are you responsible for the development and bidding of infrastructure procurement using in-house and external engineering and architectural resources?
Yes, I am.
In this capacity, are you responsible for the oversight and delivery of a new traction-powered electrical substation at thirty-four-oh-one West Berry Street, Chicago, Illinois?
Yes.
And we'll refer to that as the subject property. Is the new substation necessary to provide power for expanded blue line service to O'Hare Airport and otherwise on the blue line?
Yes, it is.
Would you explain, Mr. Harper, what this all means in a technical sense? Why do we need more power on the blue line?
So our ridership on the blue line has significantly increased over the last ten years to the point where we need to add more trains in order to accommodate that additional ridership. Today, we, pre-COVID, at least, we were leaving quite a few passengers behind as each train left the station. So we recognize the need for additional trains on that line in order to move the number of people that want to ride our system.
Thank you, Mr. And does the blue line run adjacent to the subject property?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It runs in a subway underneath Kimball Avenue.
Now, the subject property was purchased by the CTA in June of 2005, and it's been in continuous ownership since, about the CTA since then, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the new electrical substation on the subject property will be housed in an above-grade, two-story building that is sized to accommodate necessary electrical transformers and switchgear equipment in the substation, is that correct?
That's correct.
The new equipment is required to provide additional electrical power to the adjacent blue line subway tunnel tracks, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you can't go too far away from the blue line in order to provide this service, can you?
No, our typical substations have to be within a half a block or so of our track alignment.
So since CTA already owns this property for its underground use, this is a very appropriate location for your, your expanded electrical power service?
Yes, it's an ideal location for us.
Now, in total, the new substation of structure will represent approximately $23 million improvement in the, in the community?
That's correct.
And the new building was designed by Ross Barney Architects to have a modern aesthetic appeal, is that correct?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time with architects to try to make sure the building, you know, conformed to the neighborhood.
Thank you. And I want to address, focus your attention now on impacts in the neighborhood from both construction and operation, particularly as it addresses the immediately adjacent property, Ms. Allo's property. Is it correct that as part of the standard specifications for this project, or any project, the CTA has developed criteria for the contractor to strengthen, your hired contractor, to stringently follow to ensure surrounding buildings are not affected during and after construction activities?
That's correct, yes.
These criteria include a structural survey initially, and a vibration monitoring during construction, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you please describe the structural survey?
So, a pre-construction survey is required by our contract documents to ensure that the adjacent structures are assessed prior to the start of any work that we do, to look, to make sure that the condition of those structures is understood before we start any work. And the pre-construction surveys are performed in the presence of the owner, and require the owner's, owner's signature conforming to the survey results. Any pre-existing defects in the surrounding properties will be documented during the survey and monitored throughout construction.
And then would you please describe the vibration monitoring program?
So, as part of the contract, the contractor will be required to install vibration monitoring equipment to the properties and directly and adjacent to the construction activities. This equipment will monitor the frequency of vibration in each property resulting from the construction throughout the entirety of the construction. The equipment will measure and record vibrations of each structure, and results will be interpreted throughout the life, through, throughout the construction. Values set by the city of Chicago and the Federal Highway Administration for vibration limits adjacent to buildings are followed during the monitoring. These values differ based on property type and distance from construction activity. If vibrations exceed allowable limits, the contractor is, is immediately to stop and develop an approved alternate method of construction to be approved by the CTA.
And that is all part of your contract with the ultimate contractor, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's fair to say that all substructures required for the new substation will not have a physical effect or impact on the surrounding buildings, including but not limited to the house located at 3069 North Gresham, and the immediate abutting property to the south, which is immediate abutting property to the southwest, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Now, Mr. Harper, before we let you go, want to ask if you're familiar with the work the CTA has done with Alderman Ramirez Rosa and the Avondale community to inform them about the project and receive community feedback?
Yes, we have tried to work closely with the Alderman's office.
And is it correct that on August 31, 2020, there was a meeting with the Alderman, his staff, and stakeholders to review and receive community impact regarding the Berry substation?
Yes, I attended that meeting.
And is it true that the community gave, residents provided CTA with their recommendations, how best to promote the structure, including a public art component that will be included in the design?
That's correct.
Did Alderman Ramirez Rosa submit a letter of support for this project on September 15, 2020?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that Mr. Alderman's, an addition is represented being present today, the Alderman's approval, approval letter has been submitted into our record. Finally, Mr. Harper, you did prepare at my direction an affidavit, and that was submitted to this board, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to continue with your testimonies, everything that was stated in that affidavit, true and correct, and would you subscribe to it again today?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for Mr. Harper.
Yeah, we, if you put your other witnesses on, we'll take initial questions after that.
Thank you. My next witness will be Ms. Krista Gliva.
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Okay, you've already been sworn, please, for the record again, please state your name and occupation.
Krista Simon-Gliva, I'm an architect at Ross Barney Architects.
And you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Are you currently employed at the architectural firm of Ross Barney Architects?
Yes, I am.
And that's located at 10 West Hubbard Street, Chicago, Illinois, is that correct?
Correct.
Were you retained by the Chicago Transit Authority to design a building to house an above-ground electrical substation at 3401 West Berry?
Yes, and there's also some underground areas that were already existing that we have incorporated into the design as well.
Great. Did you prepare, we'll get back to that in a minute. Okay, was the building, was shown on the screen right now, was that prepared, was the, was the building proposed for development on the subject property designed under your supervision and direction at, at Ross Barney Architects?
Yes, as part of a large team.
And was it designed specifically not only to accommodate the above-ground powered traction station, and it's a space to expand to use for CTA, but with an understanding of the, of the surrounding impacts and the community impact?
Yes.
Would you explain, please? What steps did you take to reduce the overall impact and to accommodate the community?
Sure, I mean, I think as we stated at the beginning, this is an unusual triangular-shaped site, and the equipment that goes into the, the building is of a certain size, and they have certain relationships to each other. So we worked several different iterations to create the most compact building envelope, so that we were able to, to keep the building as far away from the adjacent property, the residence, as, as possible. We moved the building to be tight with Berry and to be tight with Kimball, similar to the other buildings on the corner, Kimball and Berry. And we also moved some of the equipment to an upper-level equipment platform, and some of the equipment down to the underground portions of the area, so that the ground floor area could be as small as possible.
Now, Ms. Gliva, the, the size of the building and its design is there to accommodate particular equipment that needs to be spaced, particular distances in order for portable function and safety, is that correct?
Correct.
And that is what is, on this small, odd-shaped lot, that's what is causing the necessity to seek the variations that we are requesting today?
Yes, we need to keep certain distances around all the equipment for safety.
For safety. All right, now, relative to variation number one, the floor-to-air ratio increased to point nine, from point nine to point nine seven, can you address that variation, please?
That was a recalculation by the, by the zoning reviewers during, when it went in for review. I don't know the exact difference in, in areas that we had, but it was modified by.
But nevertheless, based on their review, that is the size that is required for this equipment, yeah?
Yes.
And relative to, now, each, each piece of equipment has a required, a required relationship to the other equipment, so that there's just, just these clearances are necessary in order to, to utilize the site as intended, is that correct?
Correct. The rectifiers and transformers have a relationship to each other, and then the switchgear as well, they're, you know, need to be aligned so that they, you know, can take, you know, power from one, one to the other. So they, they have a very crucial relationship, and we worked with the engineers to kind of find the best, the best way to organize these and maintain a compact building shape.
And relative to the side yard, the, the yard and open space requirements, same thing, just have to accommodate all that structural equipment within this, within this site.
Right, right. We moved it to the corner because that's where you, you know, you get the most area because of the, the odd shape. You know, the, the further you bring it to the, you know, acute angles, you have much less room to move around. So, we moved all the equipment to the largest space possible on the site.
Now, does the, the architectural rendering, which we're showing on the screen right now, is that accurately depict the, what the, the structure will look like?
Yeah, the, the picture's a little washed out, it looks much better when you look at the original, but yeah, that's, that's what it looks like.
And, and, well, you've told me that this is going to the best-looking substation in the city of Chicago, is that correct?
I, I think it will be.
With some pride, with some recognized pride, thank you. Ms. Gliva, you are also aware of the CTA's public art program, is that correct?
Yes.
And how is that going, what is that, and how is that going to be incorporated into the site, and to what extent was the community involved in directing the public art component?
Sure, we proposed a couple different ways to incorporate art onto this building and presented it to the community, and the method that was, was selected was to do some metal, like jet cut, waterjet cut metal grillage-type panels to incorporate artwork on the gates, and there is like a movable screen that moves horizontally. So we worked with them, they provided, we provided some ideas, they provided some ideas, and we have incorporated those into options for final, for final artwork design. So there's a map, like a metal-cut painted map that will be the gate panels, and then a word cloud that is utilized for the, the screen.
Thank you, Ms. Gliva. And you did prepare an affidavit at my direction that was submitted as part of the proposed findings of fact, is that correct?
Yes.
And if we were to continue this testimony today, you would subscribe to everything that was stated in that affidavit as true and correct?
Yes, as best as my knowledge.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further for Ms. Gliva.
Okay, great. I think you've got one more witness, correct?
One more witness is Mr. Lenett?
Yep, go right ahead.
Please state your name and address for the record. Stephen? Steve? There you are. Mr. Lenett, you've already been sworn, can you state again, for the record, your name and address, and, and name and occupation and locate, and, and your work address?
Yes, my name is Stephen Lenett, side at 11 of 501 North Clinton, Chicago, Illinois. I'm a land planning and zoning consultant with approximately 53 years of experience in the field of land planning, zoning, and landscape architecture.
And, Mr. Len, you've been qualified as an expert witness in the field of land use and zoning testimony before this board and other boards on numerous occasions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Jim, I asked if Mr. Lenett, he recognizes that qualified expert witness in the field of land use and planning testimony?
Yes, we do, and we, yeah, we recognize him in his office report as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lenett, are you familiar with the subject property, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Can you briefly describe it?
That's a triangular piece of property that's formed primarily by the, on West Berry Street and the diagonal street of Gresham that defines the subject property.
And you're familiar with the relief that's being sawed here today?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the standards for variation contained within the zoning, the Chicago zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Now, in, in your professional opinion, is the particular physical condition of the property such that carrying out the strict letter of the regulations would cause a hardship rather than a mere inconvenience?
Yes, the subject property is very unusual with respect to the general grid pattern that is set up for the city of Chicago. The subject property is shaped pretty much like a equilateral triangle, and relatively small in size. So it becomes very difficult from a practical standpoint to utilize this property without the necessity for variations, just because of the size and shape of the property.
Thank you. And is the condition unique to the property in question?
I believe that it is, especially in this general area.
Okay, is the purpose of variation exclusively to, for desire to make more money from the property?
No, the, this is a public agency. The necessity for the variations is based on the physical characteristics of the property, and to continue to provide a very important service to the, to the public.
Thank you. Will the, will the granting of the variations cause any injury or detriment to the public welfare?
In my opinion, it will not.
And in your opinion, will the proposed variations impair an adequate supply of light or air, or cause a greater likelihood of the spread of fire?
No, the, the architects have done a very fine job of, of minimizing the impact of this development on the subject properties and to the surrounding area.
Now, Mr. Len, your professional opinion in all respects of the subject property meet the standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance for variations of these, that have been requested?
In my opinion, it absolutely does.
And finally, Mr. Lenett, you did, at my direction, prepare a report in this matter that was submitted to the zoning board, is that correct?
Yes, I prepared, I prepared a report that states my opinion and findings relative to the subject property and the standards contained in the city's Chicago zoning ordinance.
And if you, as you continue to testify, you subscribe to everything stated in that report?
Yes, everything that is in that report, in my opinion, is, is accurate, and I stand by that report.
And it's your professional opinion that I have met the burden to, to succeed to these variations, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Lenett. Finally, Mr. Chairman, the last thing I would like to say is the CTA is, 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 is part of the public wheel, it is, it is vital infrastructure in the city of Chicago. There are many, many things that make a city great. One of them is great, great opportunity to serve the public and its visitors, and by providing excellent service. So we appreciate the board's attention and look forward to your favorable consideration.
Yeah, thank you. So, any questions from the board before we get to objectors?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Could we hear just for a moment, again, from the architect Krista Gliva? As she acknowledged, the image we're looking at is a little washed out. Would you mind describing some of the materials we're looking at and the composition of your facade design?
Sure. At the, the ground level, we're looking at a brick facade, it's all a dark gray brick. And then the upper level is a terracotta rain screen system over, it's our sunscreen system over a curtain, a glass curtain wall. So on the street side, you know, you will, you will see a terracotta similar color to, you know, red brick, and behind it, well, you will get a little glimpse into the building with, you know, because it'll have glass behind it, and it'll bring natural light into the substation. When we get around to the other side of the building, the back near the residence, the sunshades are a little angled more so that, and then in some areas, they're solid behind it, so that the light doesn't intrude on the neighboring property. But it's a, like a red brick color, the terracotta at the top, and a gray brick at the bottom.
Thank you. And will it be lit in some?
Very minimally, you know, because, you know, they don't really access the substation at night, though. It's an unoccupied building, so the, the, you know, unless there was an issue where they had to come there at night, they, they, you know, it would not be fully lit, there would just be a little bit of lighting on the inside, so that's a very soft glow on Kimball and Berry Avenue.
Thank you.
And question, just for, just for my context, how long has the CTA, or the, the city, if the CTA is not the, the original holding entity, owned this property prior to this project?
So, Mr. Chairman, we, the CTA, as I think we indicated, Mr. Harper's testimony is owned since June 15, 2005, is that correct, Jim?
That's correct, yes.
Great, thank you for the confirmation. One other question I just thought of while you were going through is, because I, I know you mentioned the vibration measurements of the construction and being sensitive to that. We actually don't hear that too often with all the developments that we get. Any information, and it's fine if this is out of the scope of what you've measured, but any information in how those vibrations from construction compare to but any information in how those vibrations from construction compare to just the vibrations that the train at that site would give on a daily basis anyway?
Good question. That is a great question, Mr. Chairman. I don't know. I'll have to ask our, our infrastructure engineer.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, um, you know, the, the subway has been there a long time, um, and the subway generates, you know, I think, a different, a different profile of vibration that we, you may see with a case on drill, for example, which, which we'll be doing around the, uh, substation as we start to build the foundation system. So I think, I think they're a little bit different, uh, but we definitely have records of, um, similar projects and the, in the similar vibration profiles that we would see with this type of construction. So we, we, we have a pretty long experience and a long history of working closely with our neighbors to make sure that we are good neighbors and that we protect those adjacent properties from, from our work.
Okay, yeah. And it, it is the, um, a follow-up on that, is the building of this type of substation, um, and when I say the building, I mean as, in a verb, is the building of this type of substation more intense than it would be to build a standard building on this lot?
So we do have to, we have to put in deep foundations. So we do need to drill caissons around the perimeter of the building in order to support the building. So, uh, this would be a little bit more, more than what you would see on a typical slab or, or, um, basement type foundation, yes.
Okay, okay. Good context. Um, any other questions from the board? Okay, sounds like none for right now, but keeping with our, um, kind of outline and how we're going to do this. Um, I believe that Billy Drew from the Alderman's Office is present. So, um, I'd like to hear from Billy prior, um, to, um, the objectors. So Billy, um, if you can hear me, please just announce yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. So can you play, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is, uh, Billy Drew and I'm here representing Alderman Rosa, uh, of the 35th Ward, uh, 2934 North Milwaukee Avenue, Unit C.
Thanks. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. This is the core reporter. If Mr. Drew can please speak up?
Definitely.
Okay, go, go ahead, um, go ahead, Billy, and please just speak up.
Sure. So, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Billy Drew, Policy Director for 35th Ward Alderman, Carlos Ramirez Rosa. I'm here to testify on Alderman Rosa's behalf in support of the following three zoning variations before you today. 34 dash 21 dash C, 35 dash 21 dash Z, 36 dash 21 dash Z, which would all allow for the construction of a new Chicago Transit Authority substation at 3401 West Berry Avenue. At Alderman Ramirez Rosa's request, CTA officials conducted a series of community meetings to explain the purpose of the substation and to gather feedback on the design. Uh, as you already know, this utility improvement would provide additional electrical power to the CTA Blue Line trains in order to meet current and future ridership demands along the O'Hare branch. The majority of the community members who participated in these meetings expressed support for the project and we are pleased with the design and community feedback incorporated into this project. Uh, we thank the CTA and our residents for their participation and look forward to continuing to work together on these important infrastructure and transportation improvements, uh, for our city. Uh, the Alderman's Office is committed to helping mitigate any, uh, issues related to construction along the way. Uh, and we ask for a favorable consideration on these items, uh, before you today. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Billy. Um, any questions from the board for the Alderman's Office? Okay, let's switch gears now and, um, let's go to Ms. Al Hello, who is here to object. Ms. Al Hello, um, I just want to swear you in. So could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Khadija Al Hello. I live at 3069 North Gresham, Chicago, Illinois. I'm the building adjacent to the vacant lot owned by CTA.
Okay, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Um, go ahead and, uh, give us an overview of your, um, objection. And just as a reminder, you can then ask questions of the applicant and vice versa.
Um, me and Sanford Stein have been, uh, frequent communication, I'd say, within the last week. And he's provided me some reassurance that my building won't be affected. However, I do have some questions. It is an unoccupied building. And I don't know if you're familiar with Avondale neighborhood, but we do have a lot of panhandlers. So safety would be my other concern to make sure that, that area, is it completely gated and locked? And how do we know homeless people won't like sleep there and, you know, drug abusers and stuff? We have a lot underneath the vi-docks not far from us. And the other thing is, um, is it safe, like physically, to live next to a building with all this electrical machinery going on? I'm home a lot. Um, is it like physically safe to be living next to all this? Um, I don't know if it's electromagnetic or, or what, you know, stuff of that nature. Uh, I understand that the Blue Line does have a lot of demands. I've been in the neighborhood my whole entire life. Um, so I, this is fine. I, I have natural light through the front and the back of the house. It doesn't bother me that there will be an obstruction, but I just want to make sure it's physically safe for me and that it will not be inhabited by the huge amount of homelessness in the neighborhood now.
Thank you. Um, oh, Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yeah, Mr. Stein, go, go right ahead. This question seems to be for you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to direct this first to, uh, Mr. Harper and then, uh, perhaps to Ms. Gle- Glavine relative to the security at the building itself. And then we'll address, you know, what neighborhood impacts there might be, uh, from various parties. But, um, uh, Jim, can you address the, um, physical safety of the structure?
Yeah, I think Krista can probably add a little more detail than I can, but we did, we did hear this a lot during the community meetings about making sure that the building was safe and, and, and we kept it secure. And I think we did go back, Krista, and make some, some slight modifications to the, to the sys- the gated system around or the fence system around the building such that, um, it would, it would impede those kind of concerns.
Uh, yeah, I can add, uh, there is a, a fence and gate system around the whole property. Um, the, the building, you know, as you said, sits tight to, to Kimball and Barry. And then, um, from the building to the fence, there are gates on both sides. So, uh, and forgive me, I don't remember the exact height of the gates right now, but it will be gated and locked. All CTA properties, uh, substation properties, um, have, have gates and fences around them. So it'd be similar to, to other properties. Our gate will just look nicer.
And relative to living near a building that houses this equipment, um, I point out to the Chairman of the Board, this is a permitted use in the, in the neighborhood, in the RS3 district. Nevertheless, uh, the concern, we recognize that the concerned person might have living, uh, in proximity and certainly, uh, close proximity to, uh, an electrical, um, structure, electrical substation of this nature. Can somebody address those concerns?
This, this question comes up almost every time we build a new substation in a, in a dense residential neighborhood. And we have quite a few substations already today that are directly adjacent to residences. Uh, we're, we're sympathetic to that concern and we've worked with, um, our neighbors in past projects to, to make, give them assurances that the building itself will, uh, protect and, and mitigate any concerns regarding electromagnetic or any other types of effects from the electric, electrical equipment that's inside the substation. And the, the walls at a substation are significant enough to do, uh, that level of protection that's needed. So.
Thank you. And finally, um, relative to vagrants, drug abusers, what have you, obviously, a, um, an open lot such as it is, 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 is not conducive to neighborhood development. A developed lot is, is much better. It's an opposing structure. I'm certainly not a drug abuser, hope not, but I don't think I want to be hanging around this place. But more likely, uh, more off, more than that, I would hope that, um, everyone recognizes the responsibility that we all have to keep our neighborhood safe. I know the Alderman's Office certainly is committed to that as well. And I, I do not think that there's any reason to suspect that this would be any more of an attractive nuisance, um, to those kinds of people than otherwise. But if it were, I can assure you, I, I, I will try to assure on behalf of my client that a $23 million investment is not going to be subject to, um, a vagrant use or anything that could harm that equipment. Would that be correct, Mr. Harper?
Yeah, again, we try to be real good neighbors on these facilities. We do try to keep them up and, and, and make sure our neighbors are, uh, you know, we respect our neighbors and, and keep the buildings, you know, in accordance with, with the, the rest of the neighborhood. So, yeah, we, we spend a lot of time at, uh, keeping these sub, substations secure. And we, you know, we're, we're at them very frequently. So, and we have a lot of security around them in terms of, you know, intrusion systems and camera systems. So I think, I think, well, that, that concern can be mitigated.
That's right. So this is, um, this is, uh, Commissioner, can you say, so, um, that was a question I was going to bring up. There's probably, I'm guessing, on this type of building, there is a pretty significant camera security system. Is that correct?
Yeah, our new substations are, are being equipped with perimeter camera systems and intrusion and, you know, tag reader systems so that personnel that do enter have to, have to, uh, you know, be authorized to enter and, and exit. So, yeah, we have a pretty strong, because these are pretty important to our overall operation and are very sensitive to vandalism and any other kind of activities. So we're, we're pretty cognizant of that and, and we do put a lot of effort into making sure our, our building and our sites are secure.
Okay, Ms. Al Hello, um, any questions, um, or additional points, but any questions that you have that you don't feel have been answered or additional things that come to mind?
Uh, the process is going to take two years or more and it's going to start in the third quarter of this year is what they said. Um, other than that, I just wonder how much it would affect my property value. Which I don't think there's a specialist down here for that, so I'm not sure.
Um, maybe I can ask Mr. Leonard to address, uh, the, the nature of the concern, uh, based on land use and zoning principles and, um, the fact that this is a permitted use. Mr. Leonard? Steve, you there?
Yeah, I was muted for a moment there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There is always a, uh, short-term impact of properties when there's any type of construction going on. Even if there was a new home being built on this lot, um, there is some initial impact from development. Once the development is, is fully actualized and being used, uh, for the purposes permitted under the zoning ordinance, um, based on my, uh, over 50 years of experience in, in the field of, of urban real estate and development, it's my opinion that there will be no adverse impact, um, on the use enjoyment or property values in the immediate area.
Thank you. Hopefully that will satisfy the concerns. We have to, we recognize them. Uh, as Ms. Allo points out, I, she and I have had numerous conversations, certainly the last week. I think my client is committed to, uh, not only good public service in the vital infrastructure that it provides, but good community service has been demonstrated, not only in this hearing, but throughout its, um, existence. Uh, and, and certainly in, in the current day.
You're great. And, uh, you know, I just have a question for you, Ms. Al Hello. Have you, um, I know you've spoken with Counselor Stanford. Have you spoken with the Alderman's Office throughout this?
No, not, not at all. No.
Okay.
We, I went to that meeting and, that Zoom meeting in August and it was, uh, stuff that he was in favor for it and it's their property, they could build on it. But I just, you know, I, I made my concerns known. Um, and I'll, I'll just, I have Stanford's direct number, so if anything arises, I would just contact him.
Yeah, and I would, and I would encourage you to think, um, depending on what happens today in our deliberations, uh, technically Stanford will be, um, Sanford will be off the case. So I would encourage you, this is kind of offhand, but to always, um, feel as free as ever to get in touch with the Alderman's Office. I mean, Billy Drew is on here, so you now have his name.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a, a closing, Ms. Al Hello?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm not familiar with how to do so.
Okay, just any additional points you want to make?
No, no.
Okay, well, uh, thank you for coming. Uh, uh, we really appreciate it. And, um, now I, I want to open up the floor, um, first for, um, Counselor Stein, if he has any rebuttal points. Um, and then after that, to the board with additional questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, not really. We've, I think we've addressed the chair, the questions adequately. We recognize new construction, recognizes change in, in any neighborhood. Uh, and that's just part of what we all deal with, what you deal with every week, every month at these hearings. We have gone out of our way, I think, to, to be very cognizant of the, of the impact on the, of an adjacent property. The design itself, um, one of the drawings will show is just the, the, the impact on that side yard on Ms. Ella, Ella's side of the property is just a, a, a small intrusion, a max, minimize as much as possible with the recognition of what everyone's concerned about using this site for its intended purpose, but also with safety in mind. Uh, having said that, nothing more I can say. I think we said it all. You've been very polite to, uh, pay, uh, pay close attention to what we've had to say. This is important, public infrastructure, uh, and, um, we do again, look forward, hopefully we've, our, our, our burden of persuasion to show you that we've, uh, we, we meet the, the standards and that we look forward to your favorable consideration. It's important, Harry.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Stein. So, uh, before we close this one up, any questions from the board for any party involved? Okay, um, it sounds like none, so we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members?
Yep. All right, we are going to take a final 10-minute recess, getting some requests for this. Um, and then, um, and then we'll move through the rest of the meeting. So, um, we're reconvening at 5:00 PM. Uh, I'm motioning for this recess. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great. So again, we'll re-convene at 5:00 PM, which is just under 10 minutes. Thanks, everyone. All right, um, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Then make sure I see all the commissioners on. I do. Um, so, Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Saul? All right, one more minute, everyone, then we'll get started. Turn the phone off, please. Okay, great. I'm going to move we reconvene and, um, if anyone is still absent, um, I will announce when they rejoin, um, so long as we have quorum, of course. So, um, Commissioner Toya Seconds, um, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Apologies, yes.
No worries. Okay, great. We are back. Um, so let's move into pop. Um, we're going to go to, uh, calendar number 39 dash 21 dash X. And to start things off, I'll first read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary provided. Number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant PCAU2 LLC. Number two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building. And number three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the floor plans dated as of July 10th, 2020, prepared by Interform Architecture and Design. Okay, um, Counselor McGuire is presenting on this. I, uh, I see you, Counselor. So, before we get started, I want to note that, um, we do not have any objectors. We do have, we do have an aldermanic representative, um, which, um, Counselor, I'll let, um, you decide, unless the representative has a strong opinion when they're taken. Otherwise, I still want to outline quickly the specific order that we like on these matters. Um, so first, Counselor, if you could identify your witnesses in the room on the project. Next, um, if you have an opening or general statement you would like to make, you can present that. Um, then we'd like you to, to walk the board through how people are flowing into and out of the proposed facility, starting with arrival at the sidewalk. Um, then, um, to walk the board through the process for loading and unloading, how it's supervised. Um, and then we'll have discussions and questions on your security plans, community meetings, et cetera. Then with your questions. Um, so with that, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, for the record, Katrina McGuire here on behalf of the applicant PCAU2 LLC for the proposed cannabis dispensary at 2551 North Milwaukee Avenue. I believe it's Paul Sajavec from Alderman Wagsback's office who is on, and in light of the hour, I'm more than happy to have him go first, if that's his preference. Um, you know, assuming that, you, Mr. Chairman, you have no objection.
No, that's great with us. As long as Paul's promoted.
Let's see.
If not, I'm happy to certainly go through my introductory stuff while we try to track down Paul, if that's your.
Chairman, he's no longer signed in.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, so we'll, well, yeah, let's, um, let's begin. If he signs back in, we can take him out of order. That's fine with me.
Okay, sounds good. Great. Um, so again, PCAU2 LLC, just for the record, is wholly owned by Pharmacan Inc. Uh, here with me today, I have several witnesses. It is not our intention to put on every witness, but we wanted to have them available should the board, um, have any questions. With me this evening are Jeremy Unruh, Senior VP of Government Affairs for Pharmacan, Bill McMenamy, our Chief Revenue Officer for Pharmacan. He's the one who's going to walk through the operations, delivery and security processes. Mike Wolin of Price Associates, who's our appraisal witness. George Kissel of Oakland Kissel, who is our land planning expert. Um, and then with us for questions are Chris Collins, uh, from Interform, the project architect, as well as Mike Higginson, who's the owner of the property. Um, the site is located on a through lot with frontage on North Milwaukee and Logan Boulevard. It is within the Logan Square Boulevard's historic district. It is a, uh, existing two-story plus basement building. It is orange rated, uh, was originally constructed as a bank. There are six apartment units on the second floor. Those apartments are accessed from Logan Boulevard. Um, the mailboxes, entryway, buzzers and lobby are all on the Logan Boulevard side of this building. Residents will only access the Milwaukee entrance for emergency purposes. There's also another commercial space and a user within the building on the ground floor and basement. Uh, it is currently occupied by an escape room entertainment venue. That venue is also only accessed from Logan Boulevard. Um, I'd like to, just in narrative fashion, if I might, just go through our community engagement process as well, um, which was actually a very robust process. Um, we worked very closely with Logan Square Preservation, the community organization. We met with the chamber, um, and obviously with Alderman Wagsback's office as well. This is a site that needed to be rezoned to a C district before we could proceed with the special use. And accordingly, um, as I mentioned, we worked with the community group as well as the alderman's office and ultimately participated in a community meeting that was well-attended back in March of 2020, right before the first sort of shutdowns, uh, for the pandemic. Ultimately, the property was rezoned to C2 dash 3 and we filed our special use application for the dispensary. Thereafter, we held a community meeting that was consistent with the ZBA special rules, um, for meetings for cannabis applications during the pandemic. We hosted three sessions of a meeting, um, on September 3rd, 2020. Although we did have a venue where people could participate in person, no one chose to do so. Uh, we had approximately 24 people that did participate, uh, in that meeting virtually. Uh, we, along with the property owner, have entered into a community benefits agreement with Logan Square Preservation, whereby certain facade and building improvements will be made to bring back some of the building's historic features, an agreement as to hours of operation and a commitment that there would be no on-premise consumption of cannabis. Uh, we are certainly pleased to be here today with the support of both Logan Square Preservation and Alderman Wagsback. Um, and I believe that there are, there are, uh, letters, uh, to that effect in the record. Uh, with that, um, I'll go through and I'll just, I, I know that this board likes to primarily hear about the process and, and, uh, order of events. In light of the fact that we have no objectors in the hour, I'm happy to have Mr. McMenamy go through in pretty narrative fashion through that floor plan and those operations for you. Um, we can then have Mr. Unruh talk a little bit about, um, Pharmacan's social equity commitments. Um, and then, um, I would suggest that we just put on, um, our land planning and appraisal witnesses, um, on the record as far as their affidavits and reports, assuming there's no further questions or concerns.
Yeah, sounds like a plan.
Okay, great. Um, so, Mr. McMenamy, why don't we have you first? Would you like to swear all our witnesses? And at the same time, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, I like to do it that way, if, um, if it's easy enough. And just so you know, um, I see Paul is on.
Okay.
If you could, um, Counselor, just introduce the witnesses and I'll do the swearing then.
Sure. Okay, so our witnesses are Jeremy Unruh. Uh, Jeremy, Mr. Unruh, if you could please just state your, um, address for the record, your business address for the record.
The business address is 190 South LaSalle, Suite 2900, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Uh, Mr. McMenamy, if you could please state your full name and business address for the record, please?
William McMenamy, 190 South LaSalle, Suite 2900, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Mc, McMenamy, do you swear and affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Collins, if you could please state your full name and business address for the record?
Uh, my name is Christopher Collins. I am an architect at Interform Architecture and Design. I'm at, uh, 19 South LaSalle Street, Suite 300, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, Mr. Collins, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Wolin, if you could state your full name and business address for the record, please?
My name is Mike Wolin, 5 Revere Drive, Northbrook, Illinois.
Thank you. And Mr. Wolin, you're sworn in. Is, is that correct?
Yes, I have several cases tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, that's right. Uh, Mr. Kissel, please state your full name and business ad- address for the record.
Sure, my name is George Kissel, uh, offices at 122 South Michigan in Chicago.
And I agree, George, have we, have we sworn you in today?
No, first one.
No, okay, great. Um, Mr. Kissel, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And acknowledge your expertise.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, and then last, Mr. Higginson, please, if you could please state your full name and address for the record?
Michael Higginson, 2858 West Diversey, Chicago, Illinois, 60647.
Thank you, Mr. Higginson. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, with that, um, yeah, perfect. This is the perfect plan for us to start with. Um, Mr. McMenamy, can you just briefly describe your role at Pharmacan, please?
Sure, I'm the Chief Revenue Officer, uh, at Pharmacan.
Great. And what are your responsibilities as Chief Revenue Officer?
Sure, my responsibilities are to align all of the business units, uh, to, uh, help create the best experience possible, because best experience possible we can to create value for our customers and the communities we serve.
And you're familiar with Pharmacan's dispensary operations and security plans, is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, and you're familiar with this site, 2551 North Milwaukee?
Yes, I am.
And you're, uh, also familiar with the floor plans for it, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you, uh, very briefly, um, because I, I, I know that, uh, this board is familiar with Pharmacan from our, our prior application back in November, but if you could just briefly describe Pharmacan's online reservation and payment system?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, our online reservation system is, uh, essentially a, a shop online. It's an e-commerce site, uh, where at your own convenience, um, you can shop, uh, Pharmacan, uh, select your products, uh, place them in a cart and then make a reservation, uh, up to two days in advance, 48 hours in advance, uh, that is convenient for your lifestyle. And we will hold and guarantee that inventory, uh, to you upon your time of arrival. Uh, we allow you to, uh, enter the dispensary five minutes before your reservation time and will hold that inventory for you for up to one hour post, uh, your reservation time. We also use, uh, a digital payment app. Uh, it's very similar to, um, Apple Pay. Um, and you would go online and you would register your, um, checking account and you're giving, uh, your own personal QR code, uh, and at which time you arrive at the dispensary, uh, you open up your payment app, uh, at the POS and we scan, uh, your, your QR code and your payment is completed upon picking up of your, your product.
Great, thank you. Um, can you please describe to the board, um, how deliveries will, uh, be handled at this location?
Sure. Um, so if I could just direct your attention to, uh, the floor plan. Um, deliveries will come in on the North Milwaukee Avenue side. Uh, we will have the deliveries, uh, come at random times, uh, during non-peak periods, so before the, uh, store operates. Uh, the agent in charge, uh, and, um, the Department of Agriculture, uh, will be the only, two, uh, constituents, if you will, uh, that would know the, the delivery time. Um, we would have two couriers leaving the cultivation site and that manifest of the products that is in that vehicle, uh, is registered with the state. The vehicle is being tracked from the time it leaves the cultivation center until which time it arrives at, at North Milwaukee Avenue. until which time it arrives at, at North Milwaukee Avenue. Um, the courier, uh, where there is two in each vehicle, uh, would call the dispensary and let them know they are uh, about 20 minutes out, at which time, uh, for this dispensary, uh, we would be observing, uh, using our security system or camera system to observe the exterior of the building. Um, to ensure that, uh, we can have a smooth transition of product and allow that courier, uh, to enter into the dispensary. Our agent in charge would receive, uh, that courier, one courier, while one remains with the vehicle, uh, in the vestibule area. And bring that person through the corridor and into, um, a secured product storage area where we can validate the manifest, um, and then send that courier back on their way.
Okay. I mean, you have a similar delivery mechanism at an existing dispensary in Illinois, isn't that correct? Where they enter through the front of the building.
That is correct. It's in North Aurora.
Thank you. Um, and now we can, we turn, uh, the board's attention to sort of the, the operations. If you could just walk the board through sort of a typical customer experience, where do they enter, where do they go, where IDs checked?
Sure. Uh, and as we, we, we discussed early, earlier, we, uh, utilize a reservation-only system and we would apply the same protocol here, uh, at, at this dispensary. Our customers would enter on the North Milwaukee Avenue side and I can direct you to the illustration that's up on the screen. At point number one, they would be met, uh, by one of our third-party, uh, security agents, uh, who would confirm that they actually do have a reservation, a valid reservation. Uh, as I described earlier, and they, they have the ability to enter five minutes earlier. Uh, they would enter the vestibule and point number two would be a second, a third-party, uh, security agent, um, who directs traffic. Um, we, we would allow access into, uh, the, uh, public access area, um, at point two and noted on point three. Once they received, once they enter and they are received at point three, are onsite security agents and they are Pharmacan employees. Um, and they're responsible for the safeness, well-being, um, of the interior of, of the, of the premises. They would validate, uh, there is a, a valid ID, um, and then allow that person or that customer to enter into, uh, area four, uh, that's our dispensing area, which is a limited access area. Where that person would, um, you know, show their confirmation number, which is aligned to their, um, uh, order. And then again, if they're using digital payment, present their QR code, the transaction would be completed. They would enter back through those double doors to point three, through the vestibule and then back out till Milwaukee Avenue.
Thank you. Um, and there's no access to the dispensary from what we've noted as, as point six on the Logan Boulevard side, is that correct? That's simply an additional emergency exit.
That is correct.
And the hours of operation, what are they at this location?
Sure, um, nine AM to nine PM, uh, Monday through Saturday and nine AM to seven PM on Sunday.
And those are the hours that are consistent with our agreement with Logan Square Preservation, is that correct?
It is correct.
And will there be any consumption on premises?
Absolutely not.
We could turn to dispensary security, please. Um, you talked a little bit about, um, security, uh, staffing. If you could just go into a little more detail on that.
Sure. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we have a third-party security firm, Metro One. Whose responsibility is primarily to ensure the safeness, safety and well-being of the exterior of the dispensary. In addition to that, uh, providing a deterrent i- in the community. And we have a security patrol protocol, um, where our third-party security agents would be patrolling, uh, North Milwaukee Avenue up to the intersection of North Milwaukee and West Logan Boulevard. Back down through West Logan Boulevard and, uh, there is an alleyway, uh, that connects West Logan Boulevard and North, North Milwaukee. Our security agents would patrol through there, so essentially, uh, patrolling a triangle, uh, around the exterior of the dispensary. In addition to that, we employ, uh, OSS, so that's an internal security, uh, uh, agents that work directly for, uh, Pharmacan. Uh, they are, as I mentioned earlier, uh, responsible for, uh, the fitness and well-being of, of the interior of, of the facility, in addition to, um, providing access and validating, uh, state IDs. We validate ID, uh, in two ways. Um, we validate it first upon, uh, going into, uh, point three, uh, in the public access area. And then we validate, uh, IDs again and we scan them electronically to ensure that they are valid. At point number four, before we allow, uh, the product to be purchased. In addition to that, uh, we have a robust digital security system, which we provide access to, uh, the city police, along with, uh, the state police and the IDFPR. It's, the building is monitored, uh, 24/7. Um, we can, uh, uh, observe, uh, activity on the exterior, uh, 400 feet in each direction where we have, uh, cameras. And on the interior, uh, our cameras have a facial recognition, uh, capability. And we are monitoring, uh, all aspects of the interior of the building, including all closets, offices, uh, IT rooms, uh, with the exception of, uh, the men's and, and women's restrooms. Um, so, uh, a pretty robust, uh, digital security system.
Great. And you provided an affidavit in conjunction with this application, is that correct? That I prepared for you on your behalf?
Yes, that is correct.
If you were to testify further, um, on the subject matter in that affidavit, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
I have nothing further, Mr. McMenamy. Would you like me to move on or would you like to ask any questions at this point, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think, um, if you could just continue, um, and we will do questions at once.
Absolutely. Mr. Unruh, I have a couple of questions for you, please.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Unruh, um, uh, could you just briefly describe your role at Pharmacan?
Sure, I'm, I'm the Senior Vice Pe- President of Public and Regulatory Affairs at Pharmacan. I handle government relations, lobbying, a lot of the, the, the things sort of outside of the four walls of our organization. You know, relationships with our trade organizations. Uh, I oversee our, our social equity and community impact, um, world. Uh, and, and I also sort of respond to a lot of the inbound media requests that we get.
Great, thank you. Um, and Pharmacan currently operates a cultivation center and four dispensaries in Illinois, is that right?
Uh, one cultivation center in operation, four dispensaries in operation in Illinois. And then there are, there are a handful more under development in, uh, in, in, in Illinois, including one at, at 60 West Superior in the city. And then this one at 2551, uh, North Milwaukee.
Great, thank you. And you operate in several other states as well?
We operate in five other states in the eastern United States between here, uh, meaning Illinois and New York, um, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Massachusetts and Ohio.
Great, thank you. And again, as mentioned, uh, you know, this board is familiar with Pharmacan. But if you could just briefly discuss, um, how Pharmacan will comply with the State of Illinois Social Equity Components of the Illinois Cannabis Act.
Yeah, so the, the act was passed in June of, of, of 2019 and imposed, um, what we refer to as responsibilities on, on existing or incumbent operators. Um, and so, the, there, at the very, very highest level, um, by March 31st of 2021, which is just a handful of short weeks away, um, we will have contributed about two and a half million dollars to, um, what we consider to be, uh, so- so- social equity, um, um, social equity causes, including the state's, uh, uh, Social Equity Cannabis Business Development Fund. Um, we, I had a, a check go out the door for $600,000 today to an Illinois Community College to assist in the development of their cannabis workforce training. Um, um, programming, including building a little tiny cultivation center at that community college. Um, and, um, it's still right now, that's, that's how we comply with the statute. Uh, but right now, we're really, um, because most of that time period between June of 2019 and March 31st of 2021 is, is behind us. And we have come, come very close and, and will meet those, those responsibilities. Um, uh, uh, my task now is really developing a social equity advisory board to inform our company and what we do going forward after March 31st of 2021, which, which, which to us is, is, is really, is really the critical piece. You know, what do we do that's, that's bigger and better than what we're required to do? Um, and so that's a board that will really, um, dig through our entire operation from, from our board composition and our ownership to third-party relationships with vendors, to how we, how we integrate and, and, um, impact the communities that we're in to, um, to workforce development and how we recruit and train and create upwardly mobile paths for our employees. Um, so that they can raise families on these jobs. Um, we are, um, um, in, in the process of, of involving ourselves with, uh, United Food and Commercial Workers. Um, where we have a labor peace agreement and are in the, um, forgive the shorthand, but we're in the Kubuki dance of, 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 of labor organization right now. Um, and so those are the things that we are thinking about off into the future, but that's how we comply with the statute.
Great. And then specific to this community, as I mentioned in the, um, introduction, we did enter into a community benefits agreement with Logan Square Preservation, is that correct?
We did.
Okay. Um, and Mr. Unruh, you also provided an affidavit that I prepared on your behalf in conjunction with this application, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were asked to testify further on matters in that affidavit, would your testimony be consistent with the, that affidavit?
It would be.
Great. I have nothing further of this witness. Mr. Wolin?
Yes. I'm here.
Thank you. Um, and as noted, uh, Mr. Wolin has been recognized as an expert today and in prior hearings. Um, if you could just, uh, briefly describe the scope of your engage, engagement for this, for this site.
This is Simon. I was retained for the purpose of determining whether this proposed dispense, adult-use dispensary would have an adverse impact on the general community and or neighborhood.
And you prepared a report to that effect, is that correct?
I did.
Right. And your testimony today is consistent with the findings in that report, is that correct?
It is, it is.
And, uh, based on your research and review, did you form an opinion as to whether or not this cannabis dispensary at this location would be compatible with the surrounding area as to hours of operation? Lighting, noise and traffic congestion? And if so, what is that opinion?
Based on my review of the drawings, the plans, I do believe it'll be a compatible use for this neighborhood.
And, uh, based on your research and review, did you form an opinion as to whether or not this cannabis dispensary at this location would have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community? And if so, what is that opinion?
I did come to a conclusion, I do believe that it will not have an adverse impact on the community.
All right, thank you. Um, and again, you did submit a report and if you were asked to testify further, your testimony today would be consistent with your, uh, both your research and your findings and your opinions in that report, is that correct?
It is, and their reports in detail of all these, yes.
Right. Thank you. I have nothing further of Mr. Wolin. Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe you've already recognized Mr. Kissel as an expert, was that correct?
Yep, yep, I did, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And Mr. K- Kissel, in conjunction with this case, you prepared a map depicting a 500-foot radius around the subject site, is that correct?
That's correct.
As well as a land use report, is that correct?
Yes.
And that report has been submitted as part of the applicant's findings of fact, as, as well as a hearing exhibit here today. Uh, is your testimony today consistent with your findings in that report?
Yes, it is.
And based on your research and has set forth in your report, you reached certain conclusions as to whether or not this application meets the standards for the approval of a special use, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what did you find?
I found that it met all the standards for approval of the special use according to the Chicago zoning ordinance.
And did you also form an opinion as to whether or not the proposed special use would have an adverse impact on the surrounding area?
I did.
And what was that opinion?
It would have no adverse impact.
And if you were asked to testify further today, your testimony would be consistent with your, um, research and findings and opinion in your report, is that correct?
That is correct.
I have nothing further.
Okay, um, nothing further in general. Do you want to get, um, Mr. Higginson on or?
He's just, he was here as the landlord. We thought he might be helpful in the event that there were any questions, um, relative to the various other uses in the building. But we don't have anything specific for him.
Okay, let's, um, then get, if Paul is, uh, let's see if he's still with us. He hopped back on, but.
Um, I am here. Uh, I, I'm, I'm just, uh, here to, uh, observe and respond to any questions or concerns.
Okay, Paul, do you want to make any statement? Because if so, I'll swear you in.
Uh, just a brief one.
Okay, okay. So would you please state your name and address for the record?
Paul Sagivick, uh, uh, 3645 North Paulina. I'm Chief of Staff to Alderman Scott Wagspack, 32nd Ward.
Yep, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, um, make any statement as you please.
Uh, sure. So, uh, as the, uh, Katrina McGuire, the attorney mentioned, there was a fairly extensive, um, public, uh, process around this. And we did hold, the Alderman held a, uh, community meeting, uh, I think the day before the lockdown. So, we got that in just under the wire. He supported the zoning change and we believe the location is consistent with, uh, one that will support, um, a pedestrian-oriented retail district that is, uh, in steadily improving on this, uh, 2,500 block of Milwaukee. And, um, based on all that and the, the detailed discussion that we had with the community, the Alderman has, uh, no objections at all to the application.
Okay, great. Um, seems like we've gone through everyone. Um, now I want to take any questions from the board.
Uh, hi, this is Jolene Saul. Um, there was mention of a community benefits agreement. Can someone share, um, some of what's covered in that agreement?
Yeah, sure. Um, so it, it comes to a couple, uh, things. One was that the community was concerned, they were supportive of the zoning, the Cs classification. But were concerned that if the dispensary was to not move forward, et cetera, that other types of C, uh, more intense uses uh, not be able to go in there. So there's an understanding and agreement to either downzone the property back to the B zoning that was there before. Or, uh, to not permit any other uses that would be permitted in C that would not be permitted in the B district. Uh, one of the major concerns, as you probably know, Logan Square Preservation is very much a preservation, uh, ist, uh, group. And they wanted to see, um, some work done on the building, uh, to bring it back a little bit to its original splendor. So there's an agreement to remove the bars from the windows, um, to put back up sort of the historical plaques, uh, that were in the building to tuck point. Um, the facades, um, as well as create, um, um, some information about the history of the building. Um, it, due to its historic nature and significance within the community. Additionally, there was an agreement asked to hours of operation and then, um, finally, that there would not be any onsite consumption of cannabis.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board? Sounds like there's none. It was a pretty exhaustive, uh, report and then run through. So, um, we will, uh, take this under consideration, but thank you, everyone, for your, uh, diligence and time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, next up, uh, our final matter of the day. So we're moving to calendar number 40 dash 21 dash S and 41 dash 21 dash S at, um, 5,001 to 5,009, um, North Clark Street. So I'm gonna quick read the department's recommendation as everyone gets settled. Okay, for 40 dash 21 dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed expansion of the existing meta- medical cannabis dispensary. Provided, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Gentle Ventures LLC, doing business as dispensary 33. Number two, all onsite can, customer, customer queuing occurs within the building. And number three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings prepared by Steep Architecture Studio dated as of January 13th, 2021. And for calendar number 41 dash 21 dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed expansion of the existing adult camp, adult-use cannabis dispensary. Provided, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Gentle Ventures LLC, doing business as dispensary 33. Number two, all onsite customer queuing occurs within the building. And number three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings prepared by Steep Architecture Studio dated as of January 13th, 2021. Counselor Brandt, let, um, you know when you're present.
I'm, I'm, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Um, so, um, I don't, did you, um, were you on for the case or do I need to reread the setup of how um, we're taking these dis- these dispensary cases that aren't objected to?
I was, sir.
I was, sir.
Okay, perfect. Then go right ahead.
Thank you so much, sir. I understand it's late, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate your time. I have with me here today Mr. Brian Zeisis, who's the operational manager for the operating, currently operating dispensary. This, by way of a brief introduction, is an expansion of an existing medical and adult use dispensary up in the Andersonville neighborhood right at the intersection of Clark and Argyle. I also have Mr. Joe Ryan and our security consultant, Mr. Squan Golar, and Jamie Magaliff, the project architect.
Yeah, great. Maybe we, Joe's on, but maybe we get everyone sworn in.
It's a little, it's a little odd. I have Mr. Golar and Mr. Zeisis here with me, and Mrs. Magaliff should be on.
Okay, so let's start this wearing in then. So Mr. Zeisis, would you please just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Brian Zeisis, I'm a little bit 5111 North Walcott in Chicago.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Squan Golar, are you present?
All right, sir. How are you doing today, counsel? Yes, president?
Great. So Mr. Golar, can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Squan Golar. The address for the business is 815 West 63rd Street, Chicago, Illinois 606, 21, fourth floor.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Ms. Magaliff, I think I heard you.
Yes.
Great. So can you please state your name and address for the record?
Jamie Magaliff, 311 Florence Avenue, Evanston, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. And for the record, Mr. Joe Ryan is sworn in and recognized. So Counselor.
Thank you, Chairman.
You can go ahead with your case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we'd like to start going through the line items that the board refers to here, I'd like to have Mr. Zeisis walk the board through the flow at the premises. If we can promote the pedestrian flow diagram. We're going to do pedestrian flow, security, deliveries.
Hi, so as has been stated, this is an existing dispensary. We were the first dispensary to open in Chicago. And the flow and the operational experience for both the customer as well as for product is not going to change. We're just expanding room sizes and giving us a little bit more room to breathe by taking over a vacant nail salon to the north. We did go through a rezoning process with the city council for the whole building that brought us here and did extensive meetings with the community for that process as well as the ZBA. The main entrance for our customers is through, was number one, which is where our current customer flow is. We have a reception desk there where everyone's IDs are checked and medical patients are shown, show their ID. Everyone on this board is now, at this point, very familiar with processes and procedures. I don't need to go through that. Just again, to say, this is, we opened five years ago, over five years ago, and have been doing our operations, you know, pursuant to state and city regulations. And none of, none of the, the flow is changing from this point. From there, when, when they have passed their ID checks and their security checks, they flow into number two, which is the sales floor. There, they will be greeted by our sales agents, our retail agents. And then we are expanding into the north part of our area, which is number three, which is where our POS cash transactions pickups happen. And then they exit through number five and six, which is the man trap, and they exit on to North Clark Street. The, there is a loading zone on Argyle Street. And there is metered parking, new metered parking on Argyle Street, as well as significant metered parking on Clark Street as well. The security guards are stationed in general. We have, we always have two security guards on staff. They are stationed in general in the waiting area. And in general, at approximately number five, at the man trap exit to assist customers who need to come in. Sometimes people need, with wheelchair access and otherwise, need to come in. And then if anyone has any issues as they're leaving, they have somebody there. But our security guards rotate. They do perimeter checks. But in general, those are the two locations of our two security guards.
Let's talk about customer experience again, just for a quick second, because the board is interested in how people don't queue on the premises. People make online reservations to come and shop at the store.
Correct. Yeah. So we have, at this point, obviously, and throughout the whole pandemic, we have been doing online ordering only. We have a bespoke system that is developed by an Illinois-based company called Dispense First that allows for real-time access to inventory to, in order to place orders of what we have. Once you place an order, you can come and, and pick up at any time that day. We don't, we, we don't, we're able to service with a pre-order system a large number of customers today, even in a much smaller location upwards of 100 an hour. So we are able to take care of a line very quickly. If any line were to form, it doesn't. No lines form because we are able to take care of customers.
How about deliveries at the location?
So deliveries at the location, again, are not changing. They, the deliveries are entering through what is a very dark blue, number one in the back, in the back of the house. There is a curb cut on Argyle Street. And there is a gate on that delivery area that is currently 30 feet or so to the north of where, of where the building is. And we believe that it would be somewhat more secure for us to move that gate more to the, in line with the building. But currently, our deliveries have had no issues. The delivery trucks pull up to the curb cut and we take our deliveries. There is a man trap at number two that is not shown on this drawing that, that provides an extra level of security. Again, the board, I'm sure, is very familiar with the protocols of timing, of making sure that only one person knows when the time is, checking IDs of the delivery drivers. The man trap is, can only be accessed, accessed when one door is closed, the other is open. We receive the delivery there with the electronic manifests. We count them. We take it into electronically, as well as physically. And they exit through there as well. The, at such a time, one of those guards as well will rotate and share the rotation to make sure that deliveries are happening and as securely as possible as well.
And those are all scheduled?
They are scheduled.
As part of your zoning change, which occurred in July, you went through a large process, a long process of having community meetings through Alderman Martin, who's, who's also given a letter of support for this, this man?
Yes. There are actually three chambers of commerce and community groups that would count this area. There is the Andersonville Chamber of Commerce, the Uptown Chamber of Commerce, the, and two community groups, actually, that, that circle this community. We met with all of them and had meetings with all of them. And then the Alderman himself, after those meetings, also hosted another Aldermanic hosted meeting. I can say in those meetings that, that this particular corner does get a lot of traffic. And we did, as part of our, as part of being neighbors and helping out the situation, hire a traffic study that, to help the community think about parking and things like that for the long term. But no one in the community has an issue with our approach, or it was other neighbors that I think they had more issue with.
Can you, can you give the board a sort of a summary of your social equity effort?
So as you heard from the previous applicant, there's a significant amount of money that is given by every applicant to the state. I think Jeremy Unruh mentioned he wrote a $600,000 check. I think our check is also six digits. But on top of that, you know, we like to think that we've been significant social partners on a large scale as well. Beyond that, we have given to the Chicago Community Bond Fund. We've given to many food pantries. We've done a great deal of, of, of community outreach in terms of local businesses and creating a puff puff passport to get people to shop at businesses that are around us when we bring people. We also, you know, have a majority minority workforce. We have a workforce that earns, on average, and a median salary of over $40,000 a year, even though they do start at 15 or 1650 an hour. So we offer health and dental and, and 401K. And we try to take care of our community. We take care of our employees and we give as much to the community.
All right. And part of those hiring efforts are hiring from the community?
100%.
Now you.
I apologize. This is the court reporter. I did not hear that question, Mr. Brand.
My apologies, Ms. Elliott. I asked if hiring efforts were community oriented and community based.
And I responded, yes.
Now, Mr. Zeisis, as part of, as part of your application, EBA, I prepared an affidavit. And you reviewed and, and signed it. If you were to testify here today, you would testify consistent with that affidavit?
I would.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure. My, my other, my other witnesses are all experts. I don't know if you want to take any questions now from Mr. Zeisis, or if we should go through those experts?
We go to the board. Any questions right now from Mr. Zeisis? Counselor, let's keep going and then questions at the end. Thank you.
I'd like to go to Mr. Joe Ryan. Good evening, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, you were, you were hired by dispensary 33 Gentle Ventures LLC, the applicant, to prepare a report to discuss the special use factors. Is that correct? Could you briefly, briefly describe the scope of that engagement?
Well, what we did was looked at the criteria for the board to grant a special use and how it applied to the subject property and how the subject property interacted with the neighboring properties. Building design, scale, everything of that nature was very similar to what is found in the neighborhood. We had the benefit of having an existing use there and this being an expansion of the existing use. And we had found no problems interviewing different people to understand that the medical dispensary interacted very well with the neighborhood and did not see a problem with the expansion to the now legalized consumer dispensary.
And Mr. Ryan, as part of your efforts, you prepared a report?
I did.
And if you were to testify here today, you would testify consistent with that report?
I would.
As, as part of that report, did you find that the proposed special use complies with the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, the Chicago, City of Chicago zoning ordinance?
Yes, I stated each of the standards in the report and explained why they met that criteria.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to go through the standards, but if that's not necessary.
No, not necessary. We know, we know the standards.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Squan, you're, Mr. Golar.
Good evening, everyone. First, let me apologize. I normally have a nice little suit and tie, but I was coming from the police department to race up for this meeting. I'm also a police officer.
All right. Mr. Golar, you state, you stated your name and address you were sworn in. Could you, could you list your qualifications as a, as a security consultant and expert?
I might, I have a long list.
And Mr. Chairman, just, just for the record, he was certified as an expert when we had him testify back in our October hearing. I'm not sure if the board would like to recognize that, or if we should go through his list.
So that was October?
Yes, sir.
If you could give a little bit of a rundown, that would be helpful.
Let me just take it through it. So you are the president of Rescue Aid Special Events and Training?
Yes.
And Rescue Aid is a licensed private security contractor and agency?
Yes.
And you are also a licensed private security contractor?
Yes.
How long has Rescue Aid held those licensures?
Since 2017.
And are you also an emergency medical technician?
Yes.
A certified firefighter?
Yes.
Are you employed as an arson investigator and a shift lieutenant for the hometown fire and police department in Hometown, Illinois? Ms. Elliott is probably going to stop me. I know it's late and I'm trying to get through it. As, as part of your work history, from 2006 to 2012, were you a patrol officer in Phoenix, Illinois, for the Phoenix, Illinois Police Department?
Yes.
Have you also been a patrol officer from 2012 to 2015 for the South Suburban College Police Department?
Yes.
And were you employed as an investigator with the Norfolk Southern Railroad from 2015 to 2018?
Yes.
And we provided a copy of your curriculum vitae as part of an affidavit prepared for today's hearing, correct?
Yes.
And how many and what kind of businesses does Rescue Aid provide security services to?
We provide security services from healthcare facilities to weed dispensaries to subcontract. Now, we are number one vendor for a company out of New York and a supplier on different number of jobs to us here in Illinois. We also provide security service to the Salvation Army Croc Center. And we also provide security service to Family Christian Health Center, Beloved Health Center. We also provide security service for Walgreens also as well.
That is, as part of your security services for cannabis dispensaries, you're familiar with the Illinois Department of Professional Regulation Security Protocol?
Yes.
And with best practices for cannabis dispensaries? And you've also helped in, in applying for the recent round of Illinois state cannabis licenses?
Yes.
About how many, and also in preparing their security programs? I could say safely around 13, 14.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not sure how many.
Yeah, as soon as, I mean, this is fine. We don't really need to recognize him as an expert. So, yeah, but you can, you can carry on with the line of questioning.
You know, and Mr. Golar, you've, you've reviewed and examined the security plans and protocol that we put in place for Gentle Ventures and this expanded use. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you find it consistent with the Illinois Department of Professional Regulation standards?
Correct.
You provided an affidavit in conjunction with your testimony here today.
Correct.
And if you were to testify further, you would testify consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to Ms. Magaliff.
Perfect. Go right ahead.
Jamie, are you there?
I am.
All right. Jamie, I believe we all ran through your, your address. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Jamie Magaliff, 311 Florence Avenue, Evanston, Illinois.
And you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
Make sure my microphone's here. And in your work as an architect, you are familiar with the Illinois Department of Fresh Regulations requirements? Hey, guys. Requirements for cannabis, cannabis adult use and medical dispensary?
Yes, I am.
And, and you've designed over 20 cannabis dispensaries. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And as a, as a licensed architect, you're also familiar with the Chicago Building Code and Chicago zoning code?
Yes.
You're familiar with the proposed facilities layout?
Yes.
You prepared the land use plan that was submitted with the application?
Yes, I did.
And the drawings?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And the 500-foot survey?
Yes, I did.
Uh, Ms. Magaluf, I'm not going to keep you any further. You, you also provided an affidavit with your, that we, we put together in conjunction with you actually. And that you signed it, we submitted with the application for the, the two proposed special uses here today?
Yes.
And if you were to testify further, you would testify consistent with those affidavits. Is that correct?
Yes, I would.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I have questions.
Great. Okay, questions from the board? Sounds like none. Again, the report was pretty in-depth and we don't have any objectors, so we will take it under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Yep, thanks you too. Okay, I move we convene in the closed session pursuant to section 2C for the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session today. For those viewing on live stream, we will return from our closed session and the live stream will continue at that point. Commissioner Toya, second. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
We are both considering testimony.
All right, thank you everyone. So I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
And Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Great, we will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. Let's get going. I move to approve application per calendar number one dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number two dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number three dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I now move to approve application for calendar number four dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number five dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I now move to approve application for calendar numbers six dash twenty-one dash Z, seven dash twenty-one dash Z, eight dash twenty-one dash Z, nine dash twenty-one dash Z, and ten dash twenty-one dash Z. Can we take these all at once? Remind me, Commissioner Saul, is it okay if we, are these all the same?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sorry. So let's take them all at once. I'm gonna repeat that because I caused some confusion. So I now move to approve applications for calendars numbers six dash twenty-one dash Z, seven dash twenty-one dash Z, eight dash twenty-one dash Z, nine dash twenty-one dash Z, and ten dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Twiya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number eleven dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number thirteen dash twenty-one dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. One fourteen, right?
Yep.
I now move to approve application for calendar number fourteen dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. Okay, so fifteen through twenty, I believe I am going to be taking separately. So everyone bear with me, I'll get through this quickly. Quickly but accurately is the technique. So let's start with, I move to approve application for calendar number fifteen dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number sixteen dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number seventeen dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number eighteen dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number nineteen dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number twenty dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number twenty-one dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number twenty-two dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number twenty-three dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number twenty-five dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
No.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers twenty-six dash twenty-one S, twenty-seven dash twenty-one Z, and twenty-eight dash twenty-one Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number twenty-nine dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number thirty dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number thirty-one dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number thirty-two dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers thirty-four dash twenty-one dash Z, thirty-five dash twenty-one dash Z, and thirty-six dash twenty-one dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Absent.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number thirty-nine dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers forty dash twenty-one dash S and forty-one dash twenty-one dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yea, the matters are approved. Okay, so for calendar number four sixteen dash twenty.
Chairman, quick question, did you, because I didn't mark it down, so it might have been me, but did we vote on twenty-three dash twenty-one dash S? I always like mark it twice, and I didn't mark that twice, just want to make sure.
Well, let's see, I highlighted it, but that might not mean much.
Did we get it? That court reporter, we got it? Okay, my fault, thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of a mouthful to do this, so call me out.
Yeah, I always mark it after.
Whatever something comes up. And in that tone, back last December on four sixteen dash twenty dash X, we heard this matter at last month's meeting, but I inadvertently skipped it in voting. So we are going to be voting on it again this month. So again, this is four sixteen dash twenty dash S. So I move to approve application for calendar number four sixteen dash twenty dash S from our last meeting. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, that matters approved. Okay, I move to approve the written resolution containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for cal- for board calendar numbers three oh six dash twenty dash Z, two fifty-two dash twenty dash S, two fifty-three dash twenty dash Z, three thirty-two dash twenty dash Z, three thirty, three forty-five dash twenty dash S, three forty-eight dash twenty dash Z, three forty-nine dash twenty dash Z, two seventy-seven dash twenty dash S, two seventy-eight dash twenty dash Z, two seventy-nine dash twenty dash Z, two eighty dash twenty dash Z, two ninety dash twenty dash S, three sixty-nine dash twenty dash S, three seventy-eight dash twenty dash Z, three ninety-four dash twenty dash S, and four oh three dash twenty dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, so those written resolutions are approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's December eighteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting, with the exception of board calendar numbers four oh nine dash twenty dash Z, four thirteen dash twenty dash Z, four eighteen dash twenty dash S, four twenty-one dash twenty dash Z, and four twenty-two dash twenty dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, those resolutions are approved. All right, before we adjourn the meeting, thank you everyone again, and happy belated, belated new year. But I'm gonna let everyone go on to their Friday night. So I move that we adjourn this January fifteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, we're adjourned, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See ya.